Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January sixteenth, twenty twenty four Board of Commissioners meeting. Got a lot of people in the audience tonight. Thank you for coming out. At this time, I'll call the meeting into order, and the first item on the agenda tonight, as always, is our invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. And this evening, we have Pastor Wayne Nixon here to... Come on up, Pastor, to the black turn the air.
Dress you right here, would that work?
That would be great, sir. Thank you.
Wonderful. Let's bow our heads, and we're glad to see so many out to do governmental work. Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day, Lord, another day that we can commune with you and see your hand at work. And, Lord, we know your hand is over Currituck County. And we speak over this land, every street, road, every dirt road, Lord, every mailbox, every home represented, every family, Lord, that they'll have the blessings of God and know the wonderful favor of freedom and life and liberty that we enjoy in this country, Lord. And that Currituck County will continue to be a bastion of liberty for all of us to be thankful we drove through, lived here, had a part to play in this county. Lord, we want to remember tonight this employee of the county, Anthony Corolo, who passed away at fifty-six years old, and he's left behind his wife and his dear mother. Lord, we speak blessing on this family. Lord, we just ask for your hand to be on these that are left behind, that, Lord, you will reconcile this and work out their lives, Lord, for the good. And, Lord, we just thank you for his life, thank you for his service to the county. And, Lord, may us all live up to the example he set as a great employee. And also, Lord, it was brought to my attention about the senior center that there was some issues with praying and speaking your name. And, Lord, we just ask for reconciliation, that this will quickly be brought to a head and, and, Lord, that you'll get the favor, you'll get the blessing out of this. And, Lord, there'll be a prayer movement, even where it looks like it's being stifled. We ask this in your name, Lord, and for now, for these members here, Lord, that represent the government meeting here for Currituck County. Lord, each commissioner, each committee person, Lord, each person in this audience that's hoping for a fair judgment and a good policy and a good amount of money for their project or whatever it is that they stand in need of. Lord, we ask that your hand would rest on these commissioners as they make these decisions. We ask for divine wisdom, Lord, and even when it looks like there'll be argument, Lord, we ask that you step in and give the witty invention, Lord, the thought, the thing that'll solve the problem at the right moment, and everyone will be amazed. Lord, thank you for meeting with this body tonight. Give us all safe passage home, protect us through this cold spell. And, Lord, lift up Currituck County and continue to bless it in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Thank you for coming out tonight, Pastor. We appreciate your services this evening. Next up is our Ethics Awareness and Conflict of Interest Reminder from the county attorney.
Emailing to her as we speak.
Okay.
You don't have to stay for the whole meeting. You're more than welcome to.
You're welcome to.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming out this evening.
I'm just a...
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you again. Be safe traveling.
Thank you, Wayne.
Pursuant to GS one fifty-three A dash forty-four, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS fourteen dash two thirty-four or one sixty D dash one oh nine. In accordance with Chapter Two, Division Three of the Currituck County Code of Wardens, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
Anything from the board this evening? Yes, sir.
Possibly item two under public hearing. My son manages a sandpit that could be affected by this.
Okay. Well, we can explore that further when we get into that agenda item and see where that takes us. All right. Next up is the approval of the agenda, and I believe we need to. I'm in the agenda this evening.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move the county manager's report and the county's attorney's report up ahead of the public comment and then follow the order as it stands after that.
Okay. Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Well, then, we will start off tonight with a hot topic around Facebook these days. I guess our county attorney, we can start with Ms. Megan this evening about...
Yes, also, Mr. Chairman, I just want to mention, was there another motion to amend regarding closed session?
Oh, yep. Sorry about that. Well, we'll have to amend that when we get down to now or later.
Now.
Okay. So, we need to additionally amend the agenda, and I'll move to add GS one four three dash three one eight dot one one six to discuss personnel issues in addition to the other closed session item this evening.
One second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. You're up.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as most of you know, and it's already been mentioned, tonight, the county senior center received a letter from the Freedom from Religion Foundation regarding a prayer practice that's been taking place at the senior center for at least fourteen years, maybe longer. It's my understanding that it was a voluntary practice whereby the individuals at the senior center before lunch could sing a song. It's called "God is Great, God is Good." A lot of people may be familiar with that. However, this letter mentions that someone complained about the prayer and felt like they were being coerced into saying this prayer prior to lunch, and so that's when we received a letter about that. And so, when I looked into it and spoke with Stacy Joseph at the senior center, it didn't appear as if it was a violation of the Constitution. However, I recommended to err on the side of not violating the Constitution, that we do a moment of silence in its place so that whatever religion background you're from, you can do whatever you want during that time as opposed to one specific prayer. So, moment of silence may be a misnomer because it doesn't mean you're prohibited from praying. It's just it's a voluntary time where you can do whatever you want, if you want to be silent, if you want to pray, or sing a song. So, I think there was some confusion. I think there was some rumor that we were prohibiting all prayer in the county. That's absolutely not true. We just want to be careful about establishment of religion clause in the First Amendment of the Constitution.
Case. Sorry.
Please.
So, my first question is, how? Because I read the email. I saw we've already responded to the complaintant, right? That, to me, is a policy change that I think we should have discussed first. It, you know, coming out and saying and telling them that we're going to adopt something that the board... I mean, unless I missed an earlier email.
I think we're changing it.
I mean, what?
I don't, I didn't, it sounded like, I don't think we were changing it. We're just, if they want to continue to pray, pray out loud, pray silently, do whatever they want to.
Well, I mean, I can pull up the email and quote it, but it's something to the effect of a moment of silence. Let me, let me pull it up. I don't want to misquote.
Was that, did you craft that email?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, so...
A moment of silence.
Right.
Silence, I mean, we don't define it in the UDO, but it means, I think what it means, silence, correct?
Well, I don't think the UDO is probably applicable in this.
My point is, unless a term is specifically defined, we use the common definition of what silence means.
That's true.
So, when you, when you told them, when you sent the letter to FFRF, you spoke from the county adopting a position of moment of silence as opposed to prayer.
Yes.
I would argue categorically, constitutionally, they are protected in praying because the county's not the one forcing it. It is individuals taking that, whatever. Nonetheless, there are legal resources that we could talk to and we could consult with that are far more adept at interpreting constitutional law and how it pertains to this than I think we may own in this room. And so, consequently, I think we came out with an opinion or we came out with a position to FFRF that I don't know that we, as a board, had an opportunity to weigh in on that.
Could, could that be amended to state that the moment of silence would include anyone's wishes to do a open prayer, silent prayer, all religions? And that's easy enough to amend that, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
In my mind, I've always thought a moment of silence meant you could either be silent, you could pray, you could do whatever. It's just saying...
We just need to send an amendment to identify, to clarify what, what was meant by moment of silence, to include any religions, openly, silent prayer, open prayer, songs, anything you want to do in that moment of silence. Is our interpretation as Currituck County?
I'm gonna say something that might not be popular, but you said you're praying for the person that complained, and I'm praying that they come back to the senior center, to be honest.
Okay. And also, I mean, the senior center itself can clarify that it's voluntary. They can pray. I mean, this was just a response to this Freedom from Religion Foundation.
Did we have a time limit that we had to respond to?
No.
Then...
They have, the Freedom of Freedom from Religion Foundation has eight hundred members in the state of North Carolina, out of twelve million people. Doing the math, and I'm not an accounting major or anything, it's point zero 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 seven oh two five. That's how much they make up in the North Carolina. So, I'm gonna pray for them as well tonight.
So, I think, Mr. Chairman, just what we just need to do to clarify this is we'll just, as a board, and we'll just clarify the language in there and then agree to it as a board or whatever. And then, just have Megan send an amended letter to clarify exactly what was meant by that.
Just a clarification. So, if I'm at the senior center and we're getting ready to eat, and I just stand up and start saying "God is Great," that's okay? Or can someone say, "Hey, Selena, you've got a great singing voice. How about you say the 'God is Great' today?" Can that happen, or does it just have to all be organic and just happen on the spur of the moment? Can it be organized so members that attend there can say the blessing if they want?
I think so.
Okay.
Can we make a policy exempting us and saying it's voluntary? I mean, like...
Well, hang on, hang on a second. So, you know, earlier, I think I might have been talking to Paul or another commissioner, but, you know, if we have, if we allow prayer before meal, can we not say that, okay, the lunch is at twelve thirty. At twelve fifteen, a prayer will be held before the meal for those that wish to participate?
Yes.
And then, if you don't want to participate, you may come in at twelve thirty after that prayer time.
Absolutely, yes.
So, I think that is maybe a better solution to this problem, to allow people that want to have that fellowship, to have that fellowship prior to a meal. And then, and then if you're, if you're not into that, it's not your thing, you may come in afterwards and not feel pressured in any way, shape, or form.
Let me, let me say, back in, I think it was two thousand nine or ten, there was a push in this state to take the prayer out of any meeting.
Right.
Rowan County fought it, and they lost a lawsuit to the ACLU in two thousand nineteen due to a federal court settlement. But this Board of Commissioners took a stand that night, saying, "If it's good enough for us to pray before a meeting, we should allow prayer at any venue that wants to be allowed." That's my position. I will stick to it. We've been praying since then, and we haven't stopped.
No, we have not.
And I would argue, that type of a thing, ACLJ is right up there in Virginia Beach, and, you know, they do this stuff all the time. And as long as it's not county-directed at the people, it constitutionally, it's freedom of speech. So, I agree that, you know, come up with a schedule, right? Right? In other words, what you were saying, twelve fifteen, we're going to do the prayer for the meal, and meal is at twelve thirty, or whatever that timeline looks like. But I think any language about moment of silence, that, that I'm not in favor, that should be just stricken.
We can just...
Now, I don't know how you back up with the, the letter to FFRF, but we're gonna have to come up with some response, and I, I would like to see what that looks like before it goes out, please.
They have forty thousand members countrywide, too, and eight hundred, so that's like the number. It's like a bunch of zeros after a point and then whatever, so...
And I just wanted to add, you know, again, I'm an ordained deacon. I'm gonna pray wherever I want to, as much as I want to, and everybody else can as they want to. That's their right. They can pray all the time, out loud, sound where they want to. I think this board is in agreement to that. But, you know, the piece about the rumor, and I don't know if, if, who's ever, you know, guilty of rumors, it's shame on you because I've always told everybody out there, if you have a question about something, if you're not sure about something, find out the information. Call a commissioner. Find out, find out exactly before everything gets spread because rumors are getting spread. There's no accuracy to it. There's half-truths to things. And, you know, it takes a simple phone call to clarify something. And if you're guilty of rumors out there, shame on you. It takes a simple phone call or finding facts before you make comments out there, and it's easy to verify things. And that's all I'll say about that because rumors are just, I mean, they get everybody wound up, and they may not even have all the facts.
All right. All right. So, I think we'll do a direction, and we can get with our staff and craft a response and...
What we're looking forward is like if they eat at twelve thirty, prayer is optional at twelve fifty or twelve twenty.
Offer, offer an option.
Something similar to that.
So, that the four people in this county that aren't, that are atheists can not pray. Okay. Well, we kind of jumped ahead a little bit. Ike, do you have anything for us this evening while we're, before we jump into public comment?
Yes, I'll update the board on a few things. First of all, Mr. Chairman, Senator Bobby Hennig, who's, who's here tonight for another matter. He and I met with the Corps of Engineers in Wilmington last Friday in order to, again, try to push forward a process to receive permits that would allow for dredging of a channel into the Wellhead Boat Basin. As some of you know, we have been trying for a couple decades or more to, to get that completed, and we've been denied every time by the Corps and by state agencies. I would have to say, and Senator Hennig can certainly chime in, that it was, I thought, a positive meeting. It's partially a new team there now, a new colonel, new regulatory affairs director. Their, their attorney was also there, as well as a deputy for the Corps in the Wilmington District. There, we had a very open discussion. They did not say no. They didn't say yes, but they said there's a, that there is a possible path forward. They would like us to put together, again, a more defined statement of purpose. They suggested that we would want to present any kind of mitigation that we might propose in exchange for a permit relative to any removal of subaquatic vegetation to evaluate any and all alternatives and be able to explain why an alternative to our purpose is not also viable and appropriate. And so, bottom line is, we think we will be moving forward to put together a consulting team again to start developing those, those documents that will enable us to go to a pre-scoping meeting, as invited by the Corps to do, once we have that together and are ready to sit down with them to get their feedback, response, and comments about how we might better define what we want and eventually in an application. Senator Hennig also has pulled in President Pro-Town Berger's staff to help us with, certainly with state agencies. And one of, one of, Senator Berger's staff spent a lot of time last week in communicating with state agencies, and at least the Division of Coastal Management, from the response we received from her, essentially singing the same song as the Corps of Engineers. So, we, I think we have an opening that will allow us to attempt to move forward again to, to make application and hopefully be successful this time.
Well, I'm gonna hold my fingers crossed. I guess before the bridge gets built.
Did we not have, Paul, when we went to the White, to Capitol up there to meet with the staff, we had a thumb, we had a thumb drive.
We presented that. We presented...
Yeah, but they couldn't take it because it was on a thumb drive. Their staff couldn't up there. We couldn't handle it.
It got emailed. Army Corps got it.
Yeah, but they should have. We have that thing. We could capture that again and just keep that back, too. Yes.
That had the photos of the basin with nothing but mud as far as the eye could see.
Yeah, they had that again. We sent them back up information before a meeting last Friday. It is actually from a presentation that former county manager Dan Scanlon made to, made to this board, a pretty lengthy presentation explaining the history, the rationale, and, and the need at that time. So, they, they've seen that and understand what it is that we want.
Okay.
That's good news.
Secondly, over the weekend, the chairman and I received a, an email from Donna Creef, who is the Government Affairs Director for the Outer Banks Association of Realtors, letting us know again of the North Carolina Rate Bureau's request to increase property insurance rates for homeowners' insurance in our region. We've gone through this battle before. We're getting ready to have to battle it again. What they're proposing would mean a forty-five point one percent increase for inland areas of Currituck County and thirty-three point, let's see. I'm sorry, the beach area would be forty, forty-five point one increase, and for the inland areas, a thirty-three point nine percent increase in rates. The Department of Insurance is taking comments until February second. Without objection, I would like to suggest that staff prepare a letter for the chairman's signature expressing our opposition to any rate increase. And in addition, we will post information on the county website that will enable citizens to see some talking points and also to be able to see who they might submit comments to and in what form, owner before February second, so at least Currituck County goes on record in opposition to such, such an increase.
Okay. One other thing, while we got you on the stand, Ike and I talked earlier this week. You had sent out an email to the board on the, on the Mayock Sewer Plant about the PPP plan and have not given Ike direction yet, as we have. Bobby has thankfully secured sixteen million dollars for the county's use to go towards infrastructure, sewer, and water. We no longer need to go through the PPP process, but Ike needs us to formally let him drop that. So, I'm looking to the board for direction at this moment so he can...
This moment?
We just need to, we just need to let him know that we're no longer...
Do we need a motion or just approval?
Ike, what would you feel comfortable with in that situation?
Oh, well, I think since you, I think you adopted the public-private partnership path by motion, that'd be appropriate to dissolve it.
I'll make a motion. We dissolve that PPP funding.
I will second that.
Paul, any thoughts?
I, the only thing, have they developed any documentation for us?
Has who developed documentation?
The company that was running the PPP.
Have they developed documentation? No, they have not developed yet the...
The report?
Well, we've necessary to seek a partner, and then, of course, there are no contracts that have yet been developed.
But they were doing analysis and all that kind of stuff?
Yes. Oh, yes.
Have they delivered any of that?
They have delivered. I think you all saw an initial report when, of course, they made recommendations as to what form of public-private partnership. We've had additional meetings with them since as they're continuing to do analysis and evaluation of how we might proceed. I don't know if we've gotten anything, any other deliverables since. I know they've had their engineering firm out here to tour our wastewater facilities to see how feasible it would be to package them all together in a public-private partnership form.
And what's our billing to date on them, and what is our estimated termination cost?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't have...
I'd like to know where we're at with that.
Get that information to the board, sure.
Would that, would you, did you want to bring any action?
It's not gonna matter. It's not gonna matter on this.
We're gonna have a cost associated with it.
Definitely need to cut it off, cut the, just pick it off, so... Okay. Kevin, you had a comment?
Pretty much it was the same question that he asked for the most part, and we addressed.
All right. Anything else, Paul?
No.
Okay.
In regards to this, didn't the General Assembly kind of tighten it up on how you could do these PP's?
As, as I did attach to, to the, to the memorandum, the General Assembly adopted legislation...
They actually discourage it.
Yeah, it really makes it much more difficult, and there has to be a greater showing of the need for a public-private partnership rather than a more traditional form of procurement.
And so, for those of you listening out there, the board has been looking at ways to fund replacement, repair of the Mayock wastewater plant, and we looked at going into a partnership with a private entity whereby they would provide the financing so that we didn't have to, to absorb all that financing at county level. And so, we entertain this idea of a public partner, private ship, partnership whereby they would, they would manage our facilities. We would still own them, but they would manage them. And since we've secured funding from the state, we no longer need their help to do that. So, we're gonna, that, that's what we're discussing tonight, is backing out of that and going a more traditional method of designing and building these plants and just send them out to bits. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
I have one other thing.
Yes, sir.
Are you familiar at all with Bright Speed and what they're doing in the county right now?
Uh, somewhat.
Not providing internet.
No, no, no.
I mean...
They are providing internet, but not very good.
With the towers and stuff?
Stop!
To, to the extent that, that they, they were successful in receiving a state grant to, to place an internet service into underserved areas of the county.
So, for those out there listening, these guys are all wearing blaze yellow. They're in a pickup truck with flashing lights. They've already had one guy come at them with a weapon. You know, "What are you doing? Get off my property," because they have no, there was no sign on the door. I mean, they're in the first week of doing site survey on what, what they're about. The question I had, because I spoke to the manager, because, of course, I'd left, I would never have brought a weapon out for the discussion. But in talking with them, you know, he showed me their map, and it's not complete as to, they're really, they're looking at every single telephone pole in the county, is what I understood. And they're, they're analyzing the pole itself, what's around it, and can it carry the weight of, and they said fiber.
Are they not doing towers, too, I thought?
Well...
I mean, I heard this evening something about towers being built to help facilitate, but I don't, they don't know what their design, what their design is.
But, but I know it's preliminary, but we need to get the guy who's heading that up because they stopped way early on the road. Like, there's other telephone poles that should also be included in that. So, I know it's their first draft, but, and the crew that was at my house was from... Oh, gosh. Where is it? By, they were Portuguese, which, that's new. I, anyway. But for those that are out there, if you see some guys looking like they're doing something, that's probably what it is. But it, it was bizarre, and it takes a minute.
It's the same thing with the cops, cops. They're doing a lot of contractors doing the install so they don't have stuff on the truck.
And this is throughout the whole county, so...
Yes, yes.
Everybody knows, you're looking at the whole county to get it.
But they were saying a year, so I don't... That seems inconceivable to me, but...
Well, they, infrastructure is getting addressed, which is good.
Right.
Anyway.
Okay.
Anyway.
Okay.
Thanks, Ike.
So maybe just follow up to find out what, what it is.
Sure.
What could even happen, come in and do an amendment report if they want to.
We'll follow up and report to the Board and get some information out then on our website.
They should talk to us too, just.
Okay.
Just to, so the Board knows, this Friday, Assistant County Manager Rebecca Gay and I will be meeting with the Whalehead Stormwater Advisory Board. We're trying to get, get a project that we funded in this year's budget off the ground. We're having some difficulty in getting some response from the engineer who's done the previous engineering work. And so we'll, we'll see if we can't nudge them along to, to, to break that out. On another positive, on a positive note, Ocean Sands Stormwater District, we do have the first phase of Phase One, first piece of Phase One is going out for bid here pretty soon. That, that will be the piece that will construct the discharge of groundwater into the sound behind the county's water plant in Corolla and get us at least up to NC twelve. And I believe as an alternate, we may try to bid if we can get the bore under NC twelve in this fiscal year to at least get that project underway and moving along, particularly before there's any possible change in state rules about the discharge of groundwater into surface waters.
Okay. That's good news.
As to Mayock Stormwater, we've identified several areas that we now have bid documents or, or under, or being prepared at this point. We first are looking at maintenance in the former Guinea Mill District because as, as we know, we've got monies that the county collected over the years when there was a service district just covering Guinea Mill. That part of the project will constitute stream bank, stream bank mowing, aquatic weed removal, and in-stream debris removal along Guinea Mill Canal and lateral A and B ditches. And then in the Shingle Landing Sub Basin of the Mayock Service District, the project would include sediment removal in Mayock Service Ditch One, mowing and trash removal in and along Mayock Service District Ditches Three through Six, a clearing and snagging along Baxter Ditch, and debris removal from Harkam Farm Ditch Network. So it's good to see that we're gonna finally be getting some projects underway and, and moving along in the Mayock District.
I feel like we need to take a look at Baxter. I just was up there and that ditch, I feel like I, that's, that was the much-mine ditch with the undersized covert pipe, right?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure if it is that one or not. We, we had Dylan Lloyd, Storm, Storm, I mean, Soil and Water Conservation Technician kind of put this package together.
Okay.
And certainly ask him if, if that really needs to have.
Yeah, that was, I think, I, I'm assuming that's the one on Baxter Station where they had the covert pipe that was crushed down at the end of the road and not letting the water out. It's, as much water's in that thing, there's nothing in there now.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, maybe, maybe we can, if we can bypass that and jump on another area or something if, if, if it's called for.
And then I met this morning with the Camden County Manager Erin Burke. It was actually a kind of introductory meeting and we, we had not really met each other. And we talked about a couple of things. The first thing was the, the possibility of the county sharing a veteran services officer in, in next budget year. She certainly was receptive to that idea, wants to run it by her Board at their upcoming, upcoming retreat. We then talked about other possibilities of how we might collaborate and work cooperatively on some, some different things, but it was a good, good opening meeting with her and look forward to, to having further conversation with her about how, how we can work together in the best interest of both of our counties. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Well, that was mouthful. Thank you, Ike. Appreciate it. It's a very in-depth report. Okay, next up is public comment. As always, the public is invited to come up and address the Board of Commissioners. You have three minutes to do so. I would ask that if you come up here to address the Board of Commissioners that you strictly keep it about something that's bothering you or maybe good news once in a while to the Board of Commissioners, but not make political statements. This is, this is just a time to address the Board of Commissioners with concerns about things within the county or maybe an attaboy once in a while for us. So with that, I only have one person signed up, our, our usual James Memes. Good evening, James.
Good evening.
As always, we need your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, James Memes, one oh five Chestnut.
Thank you.
All right. Yep. This wasn't good tonight, so I apologize.
That's all right.
First and foremost, I'm a little frustrated at the jabs over Facebook because we wouldn't have had any rumors if you had spoken with constituents before replying on their behalf. I'm offended by those that don't pray. What are we gonna do about that? I want it called prayer. I'm offended by moment of silence. Now, I may have blabbed on a little at the previous meeting, but I want to ensure the public gets the answer to an important question. What is this Board doing right now to lower taxes and cut spending this year as I'm already alarmed at what may be just around the corner if we don't take action now? Next, I'm here to get to the bottom of something. I don't like getting into the blame game or pointing fingers, and I'm not here to do that. I'm here to call you out and acknowledge that if you're responsible for the decision single-handedly or as a whole, I as a resident demand full accountability and the termination of those behind the decision to eliminate the ability of our seniors to pray and worship how, where, and to whatever god they seek to. Any infringement, and I mean that, shall not be tolerated. No lawsuit, no man, woman, or child, or whatever pronoun of today whoever wants to be called, shall ever infringe on our God-given rights of our seniors or anyone, period. I said it once today and I'll say it again. Walmart employees are fired for stopping shoplifters. Leadership across all branches of government, big and small, are fired each and every day for loss of confidence. Let me, let this be a lesson and let me be clear. I lost confidence in the persons responsible to make a decision in the best interest of this county's senior citizens. You may be scared of a lawsuit from a developer. You can claim you're doing what's best to save us from a lawsuit, but what should be concerned most to you is the power of the people after you attempt to disarm them of the greatest power known to mankind, the power of prayer. If you don't like a man or woman bowing their head in prayer, freedom from prayer, come to the table because it's not going anywhere. Tonight, I pray for my grandfather of eighty-three years that fell and broke his neck this year in several places just before Christmas. And to this day, he walks around as if it never happened. That is the power of prayer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I thought you addressed that.
We did.
Okay.
I don't have anyone else signed up this evening. Darcy, do you, do you want to come up? You said you mentioned you might.
I'm on.
All right.
Darcy Messina, one oh one, White Hair and Drive, Currituck, North Carolina. I am okay with praying being, you, it's your right to pray and you can pray if you want to. I'm not okay with a moment of silence. And I'd also like to address calling us rumor mongers because there were no rumors on Facebook. Everything that was on Facebook was true and you can go back and read it. I got in contact with one, two, one, two, three commissioners and every one of them said that yes, in fact, that they had been told it was a moment of silence. Now, not, not one of them denied it. So how you can come up here now and call us rumor mongers and all this, when this is something that's important to this county? We are, we are a Christian county. We, at least we will be until we get outbuilt. But right now, we are a majority of Christians. And as, and, and I'm not Peter, I'm not gonna deny my faith or hide behind a closet or hide under a bush. If we can't pray out loud, then there's a problem. But I thank you, the, those that addressed it and said they're gonna fight for, for prayer because that's what we need. This county really needs prayer.
Okay, thank you. All right, no one else signed up this evening? Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak this evening, public comment? All right, seeing no one, I will close the public comment period. We'll move on in the agenda. Next up is Commissioner's Report. Mike, what's on your mind this evening, sir?
Well, the only thing I want to address right now, cause we've got a long night, is the, for individuals out there wondering what's going on with MediaCom, the MediaCom channel will be addressed and coming back on. We used to be an analog, it used to be sent out analog when we did all these upgrades. It's now digital, high definition. So it's being worked on with MediaCom right now to get the, to get the, I guess, the transformation done. So my understanding, we're gonna get another update from staff, but it should be, MediaCom should be getting this resolved soon. So when it does come back on the channel, it'll be clearer, crisper, look nicer, and so it's not gone away, it's just in the works to be upgraded. And that's all I have today.
Thanks, sir. That's you, Ms. Kitty. Anything tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year and share a couple of quotes I read the other day. What the new year brings to you will depend on what you bring to the new year and be the change you wish to see in the world. Both of these quotes should be how we approach twenty twenty-four. I would also like to thank the citizens of Currituck County for their generous donations for Operation Santa. The Department of Social Service collected twelve thousand five hundred and thirty dollars, and we were able to help five hundred and twenty children here in the county. This program brings a smile to many of the children who otherwise may not have had a joyous holiday. I would also like to thank the opioid task force members who will be giving a presentation tonight. I think your presentation said that you held eleven meetings, and I thank you for your time and dedication to this major problem facing our country. Our president of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners shared his story of losing a son to drug overdose and has as his presidential initiative, one more thing. President Carlwell states that he and his wife questioned if there was just one more thing they could have done. Hearing him speak at a conference and reliving his son's funeral and having to pull his wife off of his son's coffin, and then hearing former Paspatan County Commissioner Zee Lamb share the death of his son in twenty seventeen from a drug overdose tells us that this is an issue which should not be overlooked. I pray that through your hard work, no other families here in Currituck in our state or our nation will bear this suffering. Again, I'd like to thank the task force and several people on our Board served on it for your hard work. And it was mentioned tonight about one of the county employees who passed away. His wife also works for the county. She's the Deputy Director of Elections. So I ask that you please be patient with their office, and it's a very difficult time for them and to keep the family in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had the opportunity this month on January eighth to turn, to attend our first juvenile crime prevention meeting of the year. The reports there give me hope. A lot of those people that serve on the juvenile crime position, uh, Prevention Council are part of the opioid task force that we're gonna hear from tonight. And it is so important, what you do to stop these kids from going down that path. So hand in hand with the opioid task force, I want to thank our members of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, the PASS program, Teen Court, and Restitution for all they do. I'm very proud to hear how you constantly and overwhelmingly meet your measurable goals. And to the members of the opioid task force, tonight's the night we've all been waiting for. We have been meeting at the, at the February thirteenth meeting of the Board of Commissioners. We brought it into being and I just, I will say more in a little while as we start that presentation. I'm just so proud of you all. I'm just so thrilled at the work we've done. Thank you for your time, your dedication, and all that you've done to make this presentation tonight possible. And finally, yesterday we celebrated the life and legacy of Martin Luther King Jr. His message of unity, his message of hope and love is something that I hope will embrace in twenty twenty-four. We may not, as we enter into a political season, we may not all agree, we may not all vote the same way, but we certainly can say and disagree gracefully, and that is my hope for twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you. Owen, what's on your mind this evening? Kevin, I know you got a lot on your mind.
Missed a meeting, so like, I'll take.
Oh, my God.
He, I read a quote, I'd just like to read a quote. "The time is always right to do what is right." Martin Luther King Jr. That being said, this Board is doing that and gonna move forward to do that forest of prayer at the senior center. Like I said, it's, you know, people get offended about stuff. I could be a vegetarian and not like an outback steakhouse billboard riding down one sixty-eight. Don't look at it. There's, there's plenty of other ways. This offended world that we live in now in daytime, I'm so tired of it and over it. So I'm gonna just vent a little bit about that. Tomorrow's a positive. We have the wounded warriors, veterans that have served this great country, cause it is still great, that we, that we live in, are coming tomorrow to our county to do some hunting and all kinds of good stuff. They'll be at the Welcome Center tomorrow. Lieutenant Taylor's in the crowd because he's on the opioid task force. They're supposed to leave at three, maybe a few minutes earlier, cause they're gonna be at the Welcome Center around one thirty-two. Their plane flies in, I guess, to Norfolk at like lunch, and they're being escorted down here. So if you're off, if you're, live on the road or you're working and you can stop for a few minutes, wave to those guys, pray for those guys, you know? Like I said, they've done a lot for the country and like to just recognize them. They'll be here for the week. There's so many businesses, I'm not even gonna attempt to name them, that donate money, time, hunting trips, the works. We live in a great county, you know, a great county. Sometimes there might be some negatives on social media, there's a lot of positives too. But we really, really do live in a great county. The, that is tomorrow, so around two thirty to three o'clock, if you're in Mayock, we, tons of deputies lined up, blocking stoplights, letting those guys ride through, the Patriot Guard, everything. It's gonna be cold, so if you're out there, you're a true citizen, you're a true trooper. But like I said, bundle up and wish those guys well. Just like I said, a lot going on in the county. The Fire Department EMS, firing EMS guys are here tonight getting some awards. We live in an awesome place. I mean, we really do. Tons of times we're here and people are being recognized for lifesaving. We have some really, really trained professional people that work in the county. So, and nothing is always perfect in anywhere. I mean, you move, pack up and move to Mex, New Mexico or somewhere, you know, you might have a bad thing, but like I said, I love where I live, I respect where I live, and it's a great place. So prayers to all first responders, EMS, the, the ones answering the phone when they call. One thing on that too, we have one that's leaving to go to another agency who's worked here for, I wanna say at least fifteen years?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. I knew it was over fifteen, but didn't think it was twenty. So Elena Garrington, she's worked at nine-one-one dispatch for seventeen years, as Commissioner Arthur said. She's done an awesome job here for the county. I wish her well in her new endeavor. Hate to see her leave. They had a real nice board today at the EMS and the dispatch part of the Public Safety Building where people had wrote nice things and it was really cool. That's about it on my end. I am gonna pray for the person that complained, which they have their right to, that didn't like the prayer. Like I said, you could always do this. You know, that's one solution, or walk outside. And the Freedom From Religion Foundation, I'm gonna pray for them every day. So, cause I know they don't like it, so I'm just gonna pray for them as much as I possibly can. So I hope they're watching. The lady that sent that letter, what did I call it? It was not, it's not Sarah, it's Samantha. I don't remember her last name, but if you're watching, I'm praying for you too, so. That's it for me.
All right, thank you. Moment of comedic relief. What's on your mind this evening, Paul?
Well, several things. One, and I don't know the, I'm sorry.
Her chair, just like.
My chair just.
Are you okay?
Down about five inches. I'll be fine. I'll pick it up later.
Do we need to call nine-one-one? Guys, so.
You might be in the audience.
You're good hands. The first thing I wanted to do is a shout out to Corolla Fire, and I don't know the address to the structure fire. I wanna say.
What do you mean?
On Lighthouse, and they saved that house from becoming a, a history. So I want to say there was minimal damage put out. Anyway, kudos to the Fire Department, cause they did a great job. The glycerink, I got a, you know, I recommended it to a couple of people. It's not ice, it's glyce, so it's kind of cool. You can be out there when it's completely hot out and still skate. That was at Whalehead. Is it done?
I think so.
I think it is. It was free, too, it was free.
Right, right, completely free. And, uh, but anyway, I kind of mentioned it offhand to a friend of mine who went there and took his two kids and said it was one of the most, it was one of the coolest things he'd ever been to. And, you know, and he's, he lives on the mainland. He drove down to Whalehead just to see it and, you know, take it for a spin, so good on that. And then the final thing, I'm going to encourage the people that are here in the audience and those that are listening and watching. You know, whether you pray or not, that's a personal decision, it's a personal choice. I can tell you that I've served with a lot of the members on this board for a long time. And, um, you may not like some of the decisions we make, but I can categorically tell you, there's not a vicious or a mean bone on anybody up here that we are committed to doing the best job we can. And, you know, you may not agree with the reasons behind some of the decisions, but there are typically reasons behind those decisions. And if, if you seek to understand why they voted that way, I don't think there's anyone on here that would deny your phone call or explain to you why we did or what we picked or how we got there. So with that said, if there's not enough going on in the world today for those that pray, um, your Board of Commissioners needs your prayer. Our state officials, Bobby Hennig, really needs your prayer. That man is a lightning rod, which is incredible considering his, considering his stature. No, okay, yes, I was kidding. But he is a giant in, in our state legislature right now. And if you don't think we have an advocate up there, and if you don't think he is under constant assault for where he stands, and I can tell you, I, I talked to him probably once every other week minimum because he's the only person I know that's up when I'm driving to work. He was there Monday, last week? Bobby, last week?
Last week.
Last week. There was no one in the legislature he didn't get out till 8:30. And that's because he was doing the work that we asked him to do. He needs your prayer, right? He's making that drive, and he is facing obstacles from within our party or within his party, our party, and from without. And it doesn't seem to matter what, if you're an elephant or a donkey, you know, it's still a battle. And that's not just the state level either. The federal level, you know, our current administration needs as much prayer as we can possibly deliver because between Ukraine, between Israel, between our border, between everything else going on, somebody needs, we need wisdom, right? So I would encourage you to pray for all of our leaders because I for one need it, and, and I certainly appreciate it. That's all.
All right, thank you. Well, I'll be, I'll be brief tonight. I just wanted to thank the opioid task force as well. One of the members drives from Crowe all the way around to do all this stuff and is very passionate about it. And it was happenstance that she happened to call me and talk to me, and I said, you know, we got this opioid task force thing, you'd be perfect for that. And then she got sucked into being, chairing that meeting immediately, right off the bat. So thank you for your time and efforts and energy. You know, that's, that's one of the things about this county. We have people that volunteer to serve on boards, all kinds of advisory boards. So if there's a board that interests you in this county, please take a look at the county website. You can sign up. Leanne Holt is the keeper of all that stuff. And any area that interests you, as we have openings, we're always looking for candidates. We have several seats that need to be refilled as, as we're going through our agenda tonight. So if you do have an interest in serving in a certain area of the county, please do so. And then, you know, as people come up and talk about different things and, and cutting taxes and this, that, and the other, it's, it's rather interesting that we're talking about that or that was a comment made this evening. My question to you is, what would you cut? Should we cut funding at the senior center? Should we not get new apparatus for the fire departments? The Sheriff's Department, a drive around on Jalopies, they haven't been able to get cars since 2019. They are so far behind the eight ball, it's not even funny. We need a half million dollars in cars for the Sheriff's Department. Our ambulances are, are old. They cost $500,000 to $800,000, depending on the ambulance to outfit. So as you, as you, it's easy to say, cut taxes, don't do this, don't do that. But it has a cost to it in the end, and it is in the form of some service that someone in this county needs. When you pick up the phone and dial 911, you want to know somebody's going to pick up the other end of that and be there for you, and that ambulance is going to be able to respond. And it's because we've taken the steps necessary to replace that equipment. So just think before you speak, as Paul said, we're happy to take calls. We have work sessions every year, planning sessions, budget sessions, and only a few people come to those. But I would encourage you, if you have time, if you're retired or, or off that day, they're open to the public. They're held right here in this room or over at our public safety building. And they are open to the public, and we encourage you to come and listen and learn and see why a decision maybe is made. And you can converse with us when we break to ask more questions if you need to. Other than that, that's all I've got this evening. We'll move on to administrative reports. We've been keeping you guys here for a while. First up is our certificate presentation recognizing Blake Carroll, Christopher Bailey, Brian McDonald, Caleb Lloyd, Danielle Voss, Sam Dahl for participation in state wildfire deployment. And Bobby Hennig, Senator Hennig is here to present those. So I will turn the show over to Bobby. Thank you for coming out this evening, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. First, a couple of comments on comments y'all made today. Yeah, we all need a lot of prayer. This county needs it, this state needs it, this country needs it, this world needs it. I ask you that you're praying for Israel. I ask you folks that, uh, that are in the audience to understand the sacrifices people that in public office make every single day. They spend time away from their families. It's not just a commissioner meeting twice a month. It's every day. There are phone calls, there's meetings, there's travel. There's a lot of commitment out there, and it takes a lot, takes a lot to step up. I encourage anyone that has issues with the county or the state or the country to step up and be a voice because your voice matters to all of us, I can tell you that. It matters to me, it matters to all these guys up here. It's important that we hear from y'all. We want to hear from you before a decision's made, not after. We encourage you to be involved. We're all available, we all have our cell numbers. My cell number's on my General Assembly business card. I encourage you to call me whenever you have issues, some do, and I do appreciate that. Some text, some call, some write. A couple of folks over there in Crowe send smoke signals, and I do appreciate it. Thank you all very much, very much. So, uh, you know, when I was a commissioner, I knew how great Currituck County was. And y'all heard me talk about it all the time. We're just the greatest county. I had no idea how awesome we were until I started traveling around this state. The citizens of this county volunteer, they participate, they care about their county, they care about what's going on in the county, the state, and the country. It's like nowhere else I've ever been. When someone needs help, the citizens of Currituck County are always the first to step up and always the first to take charge. It is remarkable what I see statewide. And, uh, tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about that. We had, had some fires out west in Henderson, and I didn't really, it took me a minute to realize what the picture was, but my seatmate in the General Assembly sent me a picture of a Corolla fire truck in, in Henderson County, and I said, Dad Gonna Beaumont was right, we needed GPS on our trucks. But they were out there because they volunteered to go help with the fires out west. And they didn't just help with the fires out west, they took charge. You know, I was getting text messages from fire chiefs out there, from representatives, from senators, folks across the state, how Currituck is out there doing the job. They're not just helping, they're taking the hardest jobs. The text messages I received were truly incredible. And that is indicative of what Currituck County stands for and what we believe in. We are not going to sit back idly and let things happen. We're going to take charge, and we're going to help, and we're going to fix it. And, uh, I'm always proud of all, everyone in Currituck County. Our fire EMS, our law enforcement, I'm even proud of McCord over there.
Thanks, Paul.
I mean, come on, man. It is remarkable what we do on a day-to-day basis. And every now and then, you just have to acknowledge the fact that, you know, someone took the time and the effort and took the risk to go out there and help someone else when they really didn't have to. And I just thought it was incredible, and I just felt compelled to, uh, to honor these guys for what they did. And if they can all come forward, I would really appreciate it. And Chief Melton's going to come up here and then, and help me out handing out these certificates. If y'all could come on up in the middle here so everyone can see your pretty faces. Use that a little loosely, but-
Get under the red light so you can be-
Again, I do real, and, and what I'm, what I'm going to do is I'm going to, I'm going to read the first certificate, then we're just going to hand them out. A certificate of appreciation and acknowledgement of your answer to the call to fight the popular drive wildfire in Henderson County. And to demonstrate my personal pride in the fire and rescue personnel of Currituck County who are always willing to step up here and at home, here at home, and also go above and beyond across the state, I proudly present this certificate of appreciation with heartfelt thanks to. And the first one I have is Blake Carroll. Blake Carroll's not here.
Well, they're missing out.
Good thing it's recorded.
Uh, Brian McDonald?
He's not here.
All right.
So the, the next three I called out are going to be here. There are six, and many commissioners often joked about how bad my mouth wa, how bad my mouth was and how bad my math was, and I figured that out by myself. So the first one is going to go to brush truck crewman Caleb Lloyd. Thank you. And that's it, one of my challenge points.
Thank you.
Chief, come on up here. The next one is for Captain Chris Bailey. And Captain Sam Dahl.
There's like two names that are right. All three buggers.
Let me slide across. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right.
Get your paper, Sam.
Bobby, why you got a captive audience? Is there any words that was-
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, not really, y'all did a great job of covering it. I will expand a little bit on the meeting in Wilmington. Uh, you know, a couple of commissioners here knew what the last meeting held and very, very disappointed, and that's why we kind of gave up on it. And, uh, to say we were encouraged when we left there was probably an understatement. Us going down there and spending time with them had a big impact on them. You know, when we were talking the whole time, we had the Whalehead Club up there in screens big as that wall. It was remarkable, and we were able to point out all the things that Currituck County's done for the Whalehead Club over the last 30 years. The millions of dollars that have been invested, and for them to understand this last piece and to put into perspective the amount of work that has to be done is so minor. And, um, it, it was a very good meeting, and, and being prepared for that meeting, I will tell you Jenny Kelvin, tenant Pro Tem's office, did a remarkable job. Her research was spot on. We had all the information from previous attempts, and they were very forthcoming with how to make us, how to make it a good application to, to get it across the finish line. We do have our challenges, it's going to be a process. I would guess it's about a year and a half to two-year process to, to get a final decision on it. So folks, be patient. We're doing the best we can with it, and we're looking forward to getting that moving. And again, thank you all for all you do. I'm praying for you guys. Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
One, before you step down, one of the things I think that was instrumental in them taking us seriously, from everything I heard, was the fact that you were there. And because you were there, it adds the credibility that the state is very interested in this as well. And so from Currituck County, right, self-serving, because you live here too, I, my thanks for taking the time because you're about as busy right now as you could possibly get, and taking the time and going down there, I just can't appreciate it. I don't appreciate it, I can't, could not appreciate it anymore. Thank you so much.
You're quite welcome. I understand how important it is to this county. It's important to me and all the citizens here, so looking forward to getting that moving. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, Bobby.
Thank you, sir.
All right, before we jump into opioid task force, we're going to take a five-minute break. Okay, we'll recess for five minutes, then we'll jump into the next part of the agenda. All right, all right, everybody, thank you. We're back in session now. Up next on the agenda this night on our administrative reports is our opioid task force, which we've talked about earlier. Ms. Selena, I believe you have a-
I do. Um, I want to start by, again, thanking the members that were dedicated, not only, of course, to show up tonight, but for the 11 meetings that we've had over the course of almost a year. Just to give a little bit of background as to how this whole task force came into being. In the summer of 2022, Commissioner Etheridge referenced a meeting of the NCAACC convention that she and I went to, and the focus there was on opioid settlement, the whole issues around the opioid problem in not only the United States, but in North Carolina. And I came back that year and that fall, met with Ike McCree, our county manager, and asked him kind of how we proceed, and he suggested getting together the task force, kind of walked me through what that would look like, the process, how that would, um, how that would go forward. And so with suggestions of my fellow commissioners, giving me names of people in the community. I know Commissioner Payment got me involved with a lot of the health professionals on the task force through his partnership with Admiral Regional Health. Commissioner White got me networking with, of course, Denise Corey, our chair. And a lot of them just came through interactions that I have, especially with the juvenile crime prevention. Former students, Kaylee and Jesse, it, it just kind of came together. And so in January, in February of last year, 2023, this Board of Commissioners passed a resolution and passed the task force, and it came into being. We had our first meeting in March. And from there, we have heard from other counties, we have heard from the state, we have heard from people affected from loss and opioid use disorder. We have charted a path forward, and I'm very excited tonight that members of the task force are going to present our findings and all that we've done. So I would like for those task, uh, task force members that are here to please stand up and let me just recognize those members. If you'll just wave your hand as I call your name. Kevin McCord. Jesse Taylor. Ike McCree, Megan Morgan, Sandra Hill.
Thank you.
Samantha Hurd, Kaylee Bynum, Denise Corey. Allison Schuler couldn't be here. Amy Underhill, is she here? Billy Caudle, Dr. Courtney, Pastor Mark Goins, not here. DJ Kafazy, Karen Tiano, and Bobby Love. Thank you. And now I'll turn the floor over to our chair.
Yes.
All right.
Dedication has been inspiring. It's so good as a resident to know that we've got your backing on this because it's something that is a collaborative effort between our government and our citizens and our agencies and folks in the community. And it's not going to get done unless we all work together. So thank you for your involvement. And Bob, thank you for recommending me. I've learned a lot, I've learned a lot. So what we first want to do, what I first would like to do is not go to that one. We're going to move on over. This, I thought, you know, I thought about this slide and I said, you know, am I going to put it up there because I think everybody knows what an opioid is? But this is the reason we are here. This is a class of drugs that is very addictive. It's generally used to relieve pain, and there are three different forms. And when we talk about each of the forms, we really understand why this is not a drug that is a problem for one group. This drug has the ability to affect everybody. It could be your elderly next door neighbor who fell and broke her hip and needs pain medication to- medication to continue living, uh, a, a good quality of life, however she gets addicted. And that first group of opioids is the prescription opioids. These are the ones that are prescribed for pain. And there is a reason to have pain relief medication, but because of its addictiveness, it can become a problem. Fentanyl is the next version of an opioid, and this is a synthetic opioid. This is used for extreme pain. Think of cancer patients, thinks, think of unmanageable pain. However, there's another use for fentanyl, um, and it's an illegal use for fentanyl. Illegal fentanyl can be made and distributed and put into other drugs, such as, you know, cocaine, other things to increase that euphoric high. And the danger here is, and you've heard of the organization with the one pill can kill, this is what can happen, and I unfortunately know someone that this happened to, a son who, great kid, tremendous athlete, good student, great family, is at a party one night, and someone offers him something, he says, yeah, I'll try it. He died that night. So again, this is something that's not just one group of people. This is affecting so many people. And then heroin, which is the street version of an opioid, and we all know the stories about heroin and heroin addiction. And the problem is, is that these prescription opioids are so expensive, when they can't afford them anymore, then there's a turn to the street drug heroin. So again, I wanted to remind everybody how big of a problem this is, and how much it affects so many different socio-demographic races. No one is immune to this. It does not discriminate. So with that, we just want to remind everyone a few facts about the opioid crisis. There were two, and these are nationwide facts, 219 accidental overdoses occur each day. And statistics show that twenty-five percent of patients receiving prescription, prescription opioids long-term will struggle with addiction. That's a huge number of people who didn't mean to get addicted to drugs, but had pain, and now find themselves addicted to drugs. More than seventy-five percent of drug overdose deaths in 2021 involved an opioid. The number of overdose deaths involving opioids, including prescription opioids, heroin and synthetic opioids, opioids like fentanyl, in 2021 was ten times the number in 1999. Specific to Tur, to Currituck County from 2020 to 2023, we had twenty overdose deaths. Narcan had been administered a hundred and ninety-seven times, and four hundred and fifteen opioid-related calls were made to 911, with 200 people transported to a hospital. And I think that number might be a little low, because sometimes people don't wanna, you know, they, they don't wanna report it, you know? It's something that happens, and we may not even know about it. So tremendous, um, we see a tremendous need, and I think a lot of times, you know, we want to do something, but we don't have money to do it. We have great energy, and we have passion, and we have people, but here we are in a situation where we actually have settlement funds that we can use to make a difference. So you combine the ability to have a few bucks with some people who have a lot of passion and a lot of energy to make a difference, it's a win-win situation. So thank you for the opportunity this evening. DJ's gonna talk about, uh, with the opioid, opioid settlement fund, there is a process. And there is a documentation that we do have to follow that was part of our meetings together, um, and DJ's gonna talk to us about the different options that we have available.
So the state has given us a couple of options that we can utilize to, um, to maximize this funding that's been granted to us. An option A and an option B funding. An option A, a local government may fund one or more strategies from a shorter list of evidence-based, high-impact strategies to address the epidemic. So what the state has done is they have looked at everything possible, done the research, and said, hey, listen, if you can do something in an evidence-based addiction treatment, an early intervention program, reentry programs, this would be your quickest way to invest this fund back into the community to combat this epidemic, um, in Currituck County. As well as an option B, the local government may fund one or more strategies from a longer list of strategies after engaging a collaborative strategic planning process, which means we're not just gonna have the eleven meetings we did, we're gonna have a longer, uh, more drawn-out process just to get to a list that looks like the option A list, and, um, which really would not benefit us as much, because again, the state has already done the work. We know how we have to invest this money, and, um, we would end up just doing the same thing. So what we're recommending is to utilize option A and, um, go with a couple of the already pre-designated, um, interventions that the state has already listed. Yep, so... Come on, girls. So I'm gonna bring Kaylee up. Kaylee's gonna present the next couple slides.
Just doing this one so I can hit the button next after.
There you go.
Thank you. All right, so DJ just spoke about option A versus option B. With option A, there are twelve, um, suggested strategies, or I guess, uh, places where funds can be allocated. And I think, um, over the course of our meetings, we heard from a lot of different people, and I think everyone that attended, um, can agree with this, that there were a lot of different suggestions made and ideas for how money could be spent, and where, um, we could make a difference or an impact within the county. But the one area that kept coming up over and over and over again, where everybody agreed, and we spoke with some, uh, individuals from Dare County Saving Lives Task Force about what has worked for them, because they are much further along in this process than we are. And the biggest thing was a full-time program coordinator. So, uh, a big area of focus, which I imagine would take a significant chunk of money, is that collaborative strategic planning. And under that, our recommendation is to hire a full-time program coordinator. And some things that this person would do, although, uh, Roxanna Ballinger, who does this in Dare County, her list is probably a mile long, so this is a, a very big job description that I imagine the county commissioners would have to, um, come up with and establish. But some ideas of, uh, why this person is needed is to help develop treatment services programs, coordinate efforts to reduce opioid use disorder. They kind of serve as the hub, right? They're very familiar with the documentation, um, and the things that are required for these funds, um, and they're ensuring that each of the, uh, plans, so we've presented, I forget how many today, not all twelve, that would be very labor-intensive, um, but the ones that we are presenting on, this person would kind of control and be the head, the head coordinator of those, um, items. A person to hold monthly town hall-type meetings, apply for grants pertaining to substance use disorders, because there are other funds that are out there that could, um, benefit Currituck County, hold public education forums on administering naloxone, establish future recovery court program by working closely with local officials. That's a very labor-intensive goal, but has been very effective in neighboring counties, so it's something I think we'd eventually like to see here, um, in Currituck County. Assist with documentation for settlement funds, which to my understanding, um, is, is a lot. And I don't know, I guess, if we didn't have this person, who would handle that? Make connections between community paramedicine and post-overdose response, offer education within schools, and even help maybe establish a, a set curriculum, uh, for young people to be exposed to. Report to county commissioners on a regular basis, and then research the benefits of, and steps for possibly establishing a nonprofit task force. And what we found in our discussions with Dare County is that that, that process has freed them up to do more, um, and to have less red tape, so to say, when it comes to getting people the help that they need. So that was our first, and probably I think biggest recommendation, was to have this person as a full-time, uh, program coordinator.
Hi, everyone. So my name is Karen Tohono. I am a licensed clinical mental health counselor, and also a licensed clinical addiction counselor. Um, so I'm gonna be talking a little bit about recovery support services. Um, the task force agreed that the second position that we want to be able to, you know, fund would be a peer support specialist. This would be someone who would be making those connections with the people that need it most, so going into jails, being able to talk to people, but they also have some history of addiction within their background as well. So it makes that gap, um, to bridge that gap a little bit easier because of that relatableness. And then they're also able to kind of connect them to the resources within, like, the community, within local areas, um, getting them set for treatment or, or such on. So they would be a beneficial support to that collaborative strategic planner that we talked about, that Kaylee kind of went over. And they kind of are gonna be the one that helps create a lot of the resources and connecting, and being able to go out there, and, and kind of being able to get these individuals, you know, sources that we need. Because Currituck County unfortunately is lacking in a lot of resources for mental health or substance abuse, and so it would help to be able to kind of connect in some of those dots. The next thing that we kind of talked about was scholarships for rehab, inpatient and outpatient care. So this would look like being able to provide assessments for individuals that may have some type of opiate use disorder, um, and determining what level of treatment that they would need. That's also providing evidence-based treatment based on the assessed level of care. And that would be up to that licensed provider to make that decision on, on what that person needed, based on what we have is, um, an assessment for that, um, alcohol and substance abuse, um, kind of scale. And then being able to provide mental health and substance use treatment based on individual needs. And I say individual, because everybody's unique, everybody's different, so everyone that has, um, or someone who has an opiate use disorder, um, their backgrounds might be different, it might be the prescription medications, it might be a history of trauma, it might be that they took something once, and now they're kind of addicted, so really being able to pair mental health with the substance abuse to be able to provide the most effective care. And then this is just a little kind of, um, picture that I put here, because I like pictures. And so I think it kind of talks about the signs and the symptoms, and I'm not gonna read that, because I don't want to insult anyone's intelligence, because everyone can. But it does talk about that there is kind of, you know, two ways of treating that, and that is behavioral and also medicinal, um, through like M A T programs.
That would be me again. One of the things that, that, one of the, the tactics that was, that we're recommending is looking into a post-overdose response team, or a port team. And a port, um, and I love this fact here, and you can, um, take a look at this. People who have experienced an overdose are exponentially more likely to experience another overdose. So if someone ODs, um, and they're released from the hospital, and they go back about their lives, and there's no follow-up, there's no treatment, there's no one calling and saying, hey, how are you doing? The chances, I think, for someone, um, are, are much more likely to kind of go back to their old ways. And what these post-overdose response teams do, they allow that connection between twenty-four and seventy-two hours after an overdose, where you can reach back out to that person and provide them with resources. It's that check-in. It's that, um, one of the things that we see is a lot of people don't know where to go, who to call, what to do. And now here is someone that's gonna follow up with this person who has just experienced an overdose and provide that support for them, whether it's education, access to treatment, um, medication, or any other life-saving resources. And I feel that that's just so impactful, because here's someone that we could either just let go and say, okay, move on, but now through this program, we have the opportunity to reach out and grab them and see if we can stop this cycle for them. It, it, it blows my mind what we can do, and this program is gonna allow us to do that. The other thing we want to do is be able to partner with our agencies, our EMS, um, which we've all heard tonight, they're fabulous, they're fantastic. But working with them, maybe through a paramedic, a community paramedicine program, where some of these responsibilities can come right into the community where they're happening. And I know in Corolla, it's a very small, close community. I know there's a lot of people who care, but what an amazing thing to be able to follow up and put someone on a path to recovery. It's an incredible opportunity, and we don't want to let these slide away.
So Denise, on that front, how do you find these individuals? Like, I'm, uh, seeing there's HIPAA laws and all that kind of stuff you have to deal with, right? How, have you guys thought that?
To be honest, Bob, I don't know how to answer that question. I'm assuming it's something when they're released from the hospital.
Well, I, I will just make a comment. I do, I sit on the executive board of Alamo Regional Health, and I know they have a lot of data from the different counties, and they have a lot of data and information regarding these episodes. And what I was gonna make a comment earlier is, we have a health department here that we actually, we, we make this, we ask the citizens to use it as a primary care, but I'm thinking there can be a way, not only with law enforcement or EMS, but with the...
The health, the agencies, yes.
They have the data, they have, they have people coming in to see them regarding this. One of the things we talk about is the lack of resources, mental health, follow-up, a lot of things you're talking about, is constantly being discussed at our executive meetings. You know, how can we get these resources to help in our different counties? This is a perfect, um, opportunity...
Absolutely.
To work with our, locally with our health departments, and when people are getting treatments there, to let them know, hey, here's a follow-up, here's a group that can help you, and I think that would be welcomed, and I think that could be a very good working relationship.
These are partnerships.
Yes.
And, and they're partnerships that, you know, um, uh, we have a charity, and we always say this, that, you know, doing good feels really good, but doing good together feels great, and so much more can be accomplished. So I think you're right. It's that partnership between the county, the agencies, and the community that'll really make a difference.
And I'll, I'll just say real quickly that, um, Amy Underhill, uh, she was at almost every meeting, um, she was there representing Alamo Regional Health, and really was instrumental in a lot of the resources that we heard from, so, um, you're right, they are a great partner to have, Mike.
Bobby Lowe's in the crowd from Trillium, and like I said, they do a lot, far as Lieutenant Taylor can attest to as well as myself. When we use Mobile Crisis, which is through under Trillium, those guys, they help for different stuff. If somebody's having some, some sort of mental illness, and sometimes, you know, mom calls or sister somebody calls, because that person has some sort of substance abuse, so it's the same thing where we deal with Mobile Crisis, and it's free. And like, some people don't want to go somewhere, they'll come to your house. Some people don't want to talk to somebody face-to-face, they'll talk to you in person, or I mean, on the phone. So I mean, like, Mobile Crisis is an excellent, uh, and it's free.
Yeah.
You know, and that's something that gives people another, not just the person possibly, if they're, you know, messing with opioids or something, but I mean, like, a family member can reach out and they can get, you know, information and stuff like that. There's, there's a lot, but it's really hard probably to, to know what all is out there.
It's hard to decipher a lot of the, the pathways, and I think, you know, um, Kelly talked about, you know, having a program coordinator. This is where that, that person who's absolutely focused and directing all of their attention, I'm putting all these pieces together, makes so much sense, makes so much sense. Early intervention.
So we had talked about post-overdose response, and there's all, there's always talk about treatment, but what we want to do is we can ensure, you know, we say, you know, our children are the future, we want to make sure that we can, you know, live up to that. So we always want to have early intervention programs as well, get them while they're young, you know, that middle school age, uh, as, really as young as possible. So we want to make sure that this program coordinator will research and also help us recommend, um, to fund programs that will help identify young people who may be struggling with drug overdose already. And there's already those predetermining factors, you know, we talked about ACEs scores, and that we can utilize to be able to identify those children, support our law enforcement, you know, we want to equip our, our sheriff's department with the most, the best resources possible, uh, to help address our youth schools, especially with the new school resources, uh, resource officers, this is the best time to do that. We'll also research evidence-based programming curriculum to support our school system, um, and then send one to two personnel from each school to complete the mental health first aid training, which is, you know, it, there's not just youth mental health first aid, there's teen mental health first aid, so that can run the entire spectrum of, uh, first aid trainings.
So as you can see, we've kind of, oop, we've got one more. We were a little out of order on my paper. This is the, the naloxone distribution. Um, this is the, the naloxone distribution, which I think is a very important part of the program as well.
Yes, so naloxone, otherwise known as Narcan, it, I have a little picture here, but it's this small, so it's pretty easily to carry around. Um, and so what this does is this is an opioid antagonist. So say someone is having an opioid overdose, um, this will block the effects of that and help them to be able to prevent death. Um, so this is really handy, this is something that we um, also agreed on as a task force that is really needed within our community. Um, and there's kind of, you know, the three needs here is being at risk for opiate-related overdose due to medical conditions or history, right? So anyone that's had any type of medications or prescribed, or say maybe they're no longer taking it, but maybe they didn't titrate or kind of come down off of that medication appropriately. Having this is really handy. Or, let's be honest, sometimes uh, we may, you know, accidentally overtake medication. So again, having this in hand is also very helpful for that as well. Um, two, being the friend or family of someone at risk for opioid overdose. Um, so that way we have it on hand, so that way we can help to prevent that and provide the care um, to save their lives if and when needed. Um, and then also three, being in the position to assist another person with opi- you know, opioid overdose. We never know when we're going to run into someone who may have the effects of overdose. Um, you know, and this will only work on an opioid overdose. Um, and so it is a life-saving thing, it can be helpful. Um, it is not something that is addictive or to be abused, it is just something to help overturn those effects of the opioid, um, you know, in the opioid, in the brain for the opioid receptors. Um, and then in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, Narcan Administrative have reported ninety-six times. I think Denise updated that statistic earlier and it was like one ninety-seven or something like that. The thing is, I work specifically with opioid use disorders, um, in Elizabeth City at the um, medication assisted treatment facility. I can tell you from firsthand experience of working with these individuals, a lot of them will not call nine-one-one. Um, so that is something that we have to be mindful of and that's because there's a stigma. They're afraid they're going to get in trouble despite the laws, beside knowing that, you know, they're not supposed to. Um, judgment of that, fear of being judged, how does that implicate other things? And also how that affects their family and the people around them, like they don't want to know. Um, also a big one too, is the lack of health insurance. So if they go to the ER, that incurs bills, right? That incurs things that they cannot pay for, so a lot of people won't use that. All that's to say is that some of these statistics are really underrepresented um, because we don't have the available data, because some people won't use the care.
Okay, I think I've
I'll say something on Narcan before Denise says, and like I said, law, as law enforcement, we go to somebody's house and it's more common daily, you go to somebody's house and it's not, and I'm not judging somebody's size of the house or how big their property is, there's people with Narcan, there's people on job sites with Narcan cause they know somebody might have a problem, there's homes with it. It's, I mean, like citizens are having it all the time. You know, we will, the sheriff's office will respond to a call and they'll say, hey, we administered Narcan. And, you know, and then like I said, the family member or whoever, you know, they're literally, it's, it's, people are starting to have more of it because the opioid crisis is such a crisis. So I mean, it's, it's more and more every day, you're seeing it at people's house, it's in people's truck, it's in their glove box. You know, and like you said, it's not just, you know, it's not the, the group of people that are just using drugs. It's, I mean, there's so many, there's lots of groups, you know? So I mean, like I said, Narcan is, I have Narcan people, Jesse Taylor's Narcan people. I mean, there's, you know, it's a regular, one, the one ninety-seven in the last four years, there might be more than that. I mean, that's typically when we administer Narcan, Narcan administered via EMS or us, you know, to a citizen or somebody visiting the area. So it's, it's very, very important and Bobby delivers it all the time. I'll get the phone call from Trillium and she's like, I got Narcan. And she brings, you know, huge boxes and it comes to us and EMS and it's in the county if something happens, you know, it's at your fire stations, it's on the EMS trucks, it's in every deputy's patrol vehicle. It's, Jesse, isn't it on our check-off sheet now for the thing? I believe we added that on there for the, for the, like your vehicle maintenance sheet at Narcan. You know, they ha- I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's everywhere because it, it's a crisis and that's, that's why it's everywhere.
Yeah.
The goal too, just so everyone is aware, is not to hand out Narcan like it's candy. It's to distribute hope and resources along with the distribution of Narcan. So, you know, they may be coming for that specific thing, but at the same time, they're going to get other resources to help them with their struggle with addiction, yeah.
Yeah, cause there is, like she, they said, there's a lot of accidental, you know, in everybody's house. I mean, a lot of people, like your seniors, ha- my dad does this in the, the Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday thing. And, you know, he's playing pickleball and hey, I, I had to take him home one day. He was dizzy because he took his medication wrong, you know? But I mean, like I said, that happens to, to everybody.
Yeah, and I think that is why it's so widespread, because there is no, you know, oh, it's, it's one group's problem. It's across the board.
It's every group.
It's across the board. So, you know, those were our main recommendations to, you know, put a coordinator, coordinator in place, to put a peer support specialist in place, to, to work on early intervention, to work on naloxone distribution. But there are so many other ways that we can help, there are so many other ways. Um, we can establish an advisory board that encourages, and you know, this isn't something that should be kept within the walls of the county. This is something we really need to take outside. We need to have the community as part of these advisory boards for their participation and their feedback. Um, we need to continue to provide training and education opportunities for, you know, our EMS, our law enforcement, county agencies and even people in the community. Um, you know, I know Dare County and their saving lives task force has done a lot with, um, you know, really reaching out and, and creating that partnership with the community. And I believe that partnership and their passion has really fueled an incredible program. And we are so grateful that they were so generous in giving us a lot of information and sort of guidelines in getting this done. We want to continue outreach and collaboration and partnership with neighboring counties such as Dare, nonprofits and professionals to work together in mitigating the addiction and supporting prevention strategies and offering opportunities for treatment and recovery. Because there is hope for recovery, there really is, so let's not forget that. We talk about all this sad stuff, but there's a lot of hope in recovery. Um, and supporting mental health initiatives. More than one in four adults living with a serious mental health problem also has a substance use problem. And someone with a mental health problem and substance use disorder must treat both issues. So this isn't just a drug problem. Um, this has a lot to do with mental health as well. And we feel that using um, the resources that we have available for mental health and continuing to support those resources will just compound the effectiveness of what we're doing with the opioid, opioid task force. Um, and then what I think is super important is messaging and developing a strategy and a, a campaign. You know, we talked about this when we first met, you know? We can do everything we can, but if it does not get disseminated and we don't get that information out, a lot of our work is for naught. So it's so important to really focus on the messaging and getting this out there. We talked about, you know, Currituck cares, Currituck does care, Currituck sees this as a problem. We want to make it better, um, we want to have an impact. And again, like I said, there are so many opportunities that we have to make a difference with this program, with this, with these funds, with these people. Um, that it, it gets me all excited when I start thinking about it. I know Selena and I kind of get like, you know, a little weepy sometimes, but there's so much good that can be done, so mu- and I'm so excited to see where this goes. So, um, we do have a little list of resources in the presentation, a lot of links to some of the information that you've seen in here, if you want to investigate further. As far as questions and, uh, I guess, um, in sake of time, I, I feel that if you all would like to maybe put questions together and get them to Selena, we'd be happy to answer them as a task force. But again, I want to thank you guys all for kind of going through this with us. I want to thank every one of these guys who has sat through eleven meetings, um, because I really do feel it is worth it. We're going to do great things, we're going to do big things and I'm so very proud to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody out there, yeah?
Yep.
Uh, Denise and Selena are both very passionate about, like she said, Selena, she voluntarily told me I was on the task force.
Yeah.
And I was working beach duty one day and Denise saw me and flagged me down and we talked about
Yes, I will flag you down when I see you. Um, we would like to ask if we get a picture with the commissioners and I just want to make sure that we have that because again, this is part of getting this information out there. So, um, I don't know if that works in a recess or now or whatever, but I
We'll just come right out here and get it over with, yeah. Have a quick picture. Emphasis.
I didn't know if somebody had a mice problem and that's why it's
Good job, good job, thank you so much. Good job, Kevin.
I got, I got voluntarily told with you, take the picture. Alright guys, alright, here we go. Uh, on three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two. I got another, another, one, two, three, one, two, three, three.
Thank you, Jesse. Thank you, Karen.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Be safe out there, windy and slick.
Thank you very much.
Night. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
I have a long ride, thank you all.
Yes, you do. All right, uh, next up, uh, on our administrative reports, we have audit presentation for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three from Madonna Stafford Carr, Riggs and Ingram LLC.
Is that name getting longer?
It is, I think we added a name.
There was a name added to it.
Seemed like it was just Stafford Carr, Riggs and
Good evening, I hope you're all doing well. I'm Madonna Stafford with Carr, Riggs and Ingram. Thank you for allowing me to be here with you tonight to go over the results of your June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three audit. Always like to start off just by reminding everyone what we were engaged to do and what our objectives were first. Um, and possibly most important for some people, we were engaged to perform a financial audit on the financial statements as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three and then issue an opinion on whether those financial statements were materially correct. We conducted our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards. And I'm pleased to say that we issued an unmodified opinion on the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three financial statements. Essentially, this means it was a clean opinion and we found nothing materially wrong to report. So for reference purposes, our opinion letters is going to be on pages nineteen through twenty-three of your audit report. I'd also like to point out one additional paragraph within the audit report and that will be on page twenty-two. There is an emphasis of matter paragraph. And that relates to the implementation of GASP-B ninety-six for the subscription-based information technology arrangements. There was no misstatement related to this implementation, only a change in the presentation on the financial statements. Our next objective was to perform single audit compliance testing over each major federal and state program and to issue an opinion on whether the county complied with all direct and material compliance requirements for each related grant. So in simple terms, a major federal program is a grant that has seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of expenditures within the fiscal year. And for state purposes, it will be expenditures over five hundred thousand dollars for the fiscal year. Fiscal year twenty-three, we had two major federal programs. Those were medical assistance and the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Those are generally referred to as ARPA funds. And um, as far as the state major funds, we had the public school building capital fund. This also is a lot of times commonly referred to as North Carolina Education Lottery Fund. I'm pleased to say that we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on compliance over both the major federal and state programs. So basically, this means we did not find any compliance issues, no deficiencies and no question costs related to these grant programs. Um, our opinion letter on the major federal programs is on pages two thirty-two through two thirty-four of your audit report. And the state letter is on page two thirty-five to two thirty-seven. Um, also as a side note, uh, if you look on page two thirty-eight and two thirty-nine, this is the schedule of findings and question costs. And it's just a nice little summary page there that will go through our single audit testing as far as the program selected and all of the various opinions that were issued and related to that.
I think the numbering on this is getting kind of it's okay, went from two seventeen to two forty-four.
Well, I'm not sure about that.
My pages, that's why.
Um, moving on, I would like to date just a few minutes and point out a few of your financial highlights to recap the year. Your net position for the county in total for both government and business-type activities increased about nineteen point six million dollars and ended the year at two hundred seventy-six million, one seventy-four, eight eighty-four. This is down about eight point one million dollars from what we saw in fiscal year twenty-two. Fiscal year twenty-three was certainly a good year, a solid year, but nowhere near the record-setting levels that we've seen for the last couple of years with the county. And a lot of that was expected to some expense, as we were all anticipating revenues to kind of level off at some point. And I think we started to see some of that. And then a lot of the projects that we've been talking about have now started going through the implementation phase. So that's really why we saw that big decline this year. Um, even though it wasn't necessarily a record-setting year, there still were some notable increases in your revenue streams. Some of the bigger ones were your property taxes increased about two million dollars. Sales tax stayed relatively flat this year with only about a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase. And then your occupancy taxes did increase again, one point four million dollars for this year. So that is the one stream that we just continue to increase year after year. Um, largest revenue increase for the year across the board was on your investment earnings. And this went from an overall loss in fiscal year twenty-two to a positive three million dollars for fiscal year twenty-three. I will say a one word of caution for that, it's not necessarily a cash transaction that's taking place there. It's related to that mark-to-market election to reflect the actual market value of your, of your investment, but that doesn't necessarily translate to cash. So it's a good-looking number, but not necessarily cash going in the bank, so just want to point that out. Um, one notable decrease that we did see again this year was on your land transfer tax. It was down about two point four million dollars. And this is similar to what we saw last year with it coming down one point seven million. So that has been a steady decline there on the land transfer. On the expense side, your total expenses for your governmental activities increased about twelve point six million dollars this year. The largest increase with that was in education at seven point five million and then another four point three million in public safety. All of this information that we've just covered is on exhibit two, pages forty and forty-one of your audit reports. Um, next, I'd like to just spend a minute looking at your general fund specifically, since this is the largest and probably most important fund for the county. That's going to be on exhibits three and four for reference purposes. Your general fund fund balance increased about six point eight million dollars for the year. And that one specifically is on exhibit four, page forty-four. And primarily, this is related to your fiscal year revenues, which consist of both your revenues and your um, transfers in and out, that only increased about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that was fairly flat for the year. But the big change there was once again on your property tax and investment earnings, which we've talked about. And then your expenditures, which included your transfers as well, was decreased about nine million dollars for the year. The primary change there was the transfer that was put in place in the prior year of about ten million dollars to fund The primary change there was the transfer that was put in place in the prior year of about ten million dollars to fund some school construction. But that was a one-time transaction, so we didn't have anything comparable in fiscal year twenty-three.
Can I ask, what did you say the expenses down was? You said how many million?
Well, between expenditures and then transfers out, it was down nine million.
Okay, that's what you said.
Yeah. Um, since your general fund is your primary operating fund for the county, it's important for us to look at the ratio of your unassigned fund balance to your total expenditures, because, well, this is what the LGC monitors, to kind of monitor your financial health. And looking at that, the unassigned fund balance at year-end was thirty million, six forty-five, nine seventy-three, and that's going to represent about fifty-one percent of your general fund expenditure expenditures for the year. For comparison, last year's ratio was right at forty percent, so we were able to make a sizable increase in restoring some of those prior-year fund balances that were used. And really, what this number tells you, because I know I get that question a lot, is, you know, what does it mean? It means that the county could pay their expenses and operate for roughly six more months without receiving any additional revenue. The LGC recommends this available fund balance to stay at least twenty percent, so as you can see, the county is in great shape there. And just for comparison purposes, the average available fund balance across the state is right around thirty-nine percent. So you guys are trending ahead of that as well. Next, we'll take a look at your business-type activities on exhibit eight, page fifty-one. Your overall net position in the business type increased about eight million dollars. A lot of, uh, about eight hundred thousand of that is due to increased operating, operating revenues, and then you had a one point four million dollar increase in your operating expenses, which offset that. Your non-operating revenues for the year increased almost a million dollars, and once again, that's going to be that investment earnings, kind of a paper transaction, if you will, not necessarily cash. There was one other significant item here on the business type, and that was a three point three million dollar transfer from the occupancy tax funds into Southern Outer Banks water for a water drain expansion, which did boost that net position. Next, I'd like to take a look at your property tax collection for the year. The overall levy increased about one point three million dollars due to increases in your property tax base, and your tax collection rate remained super strong at ninety-nine point two-three percent. Last year's rate was ninety-nine point three-four, which was just a very slight decline there. So I would say that's a very impressive rate. It's one of the highest in the state, and you guys have been able to maintain that year after year. So absolutely fantastic job with that. One final note I need to mention is on the performance indicator worksheet that we submit along with the audit every year to the LGC. Um, the county did have one performance indicator noted for this year, and it was on the water and sewer capital asset condition ratio. This was a new, um, indicator that they added this year, and it is measuring your remaining useful life of your assets and how, you know, aged your infrastructure is essentially. The LGC wants to see this ratio at fifty percent or more. The county's ratio is forty-four percent. So in response to that, the LGC, excuse me. The LGC does require a written response on how the county is going to be addressing this and what your plan is going forward to improve it. The response for that is due to the state by, um, March sixteenth, and I've discussed this with Sandra and the staff. She has a copy of the report and is aware of making this response available for y'all's signature. The only other thing I would really mention in response to that performance indicator, when you look at the financial statements, I know we have very healthy cash balances, and they're unrestricted cash balances, but just keep in mind that not all of that money is actually available, because there's a lot of things that have been, I will say designated. They're not restricted, but they are designated for different purposes. So just keep that and be mindful of that moving forward. That is a really good-looking number there, but maybe not fully available. Because you do, um, you are seeing increased expenses for like your maintenance costs and replacement and things like that moving forward. So that has taken a significant hit. Uh, we did note any other concerns or internal control deficiencies this year. Everything was in good order. Like to thank Sandra Hill, Karen Kraus, the finance staff, the depart, uh, DSS departmental staff. They were very good and timely with their assistance this year in getting the audit done, and we did have a timely submission, so it's good to get back on track with that. If you guys have any questions or comments, I'm happy to address those.
At this time, not so a lot to digest in this little booklet you gave us, so it might take a minute or two.
I understand. I've tried to be fairly concise with the comments. Alright, thank you very much.
Alright, well, thank you very much for coming out this evening. Alright, before we jump into public hearings, I'm going to take a quick five-minute recess again, and then we'll jump into that, which will probably take us a minute to get through. Alright, alright, skip back to it, call the meeting back into order. Public hearings is next on the agenda. Item one, PB twenty-three dash twenty-six, Wilson Ridge. Request for a preliminary plant use special permit for a thirteen-lot traditional development located off Tulsa Creek Road, tax, tax map fourteen, parcel twenty-three, in the Moyoc Township. And, um, this was not the one, this was, Sandmine was yours, Owen, right?
Yes.
Okay, alright. So with that, um, who's going to be presenting tonight? Jenny? Oh, wait, it's got to be everybody. Thank you. Anybody who's going to be testifying this evening, please come up and be sworn in. Alright, you all saw me tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Thank you. Alright, thank you for the reminder, Jenny. It's been a while since we've done one of these.
Thank you. And so the applicant, Wilson Ridge of Moyoc LLC, has requested this preliminary plat special use permit for a thirteen-lot subdivision. It's a type-one subdivision. Typically, uh, subdivisions that are less than twenty lots are type-one, and they don't require the special use permit along with the preliminary plat, unless county facilities are within eighty-five percent of maximum capacity. And since we do have some school facilities that are within eighty-five, within eighty-five percent of capacity, that's why you're hearing this application tonight for this thirteen-lot traditional subdivision. Uh, community meeting was not required for this application. Alright, so to orient you to the subject parcel, it's here in the middle. You guys can see this on your screens?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. It's right off of Tulsa Creek Road, across from Panther Landing Road. The site's approximately nineteen acres. You have Panther Landing subdivision to the north. To the west and east, you have some residential dwellings on some large lots. To the south, you can see there's open space here. Can you see my mouse? Open space here, uh, which is part of the waterly subdivision that's here to the, uh, east, southeast. The site is currently undeveloped. Here's a, a shot of that a little bit closer in, so you can see the property as it, as it currently exists. The property is zoned SFM, single-family residential mainland. Uh, it's bordered by agricultural zoning on either side, east and west, and then by, uh, residential zoning to the north and to the south. Here you can see the general layout of the proposed subdivision. Again, thirteen lots. Uh, I'm going to go through a lot of the staff report at this time. If you want to turn to your agenda packet, that staff report starts on page sixteen. Going to be going over the information from that report. The lot does propose access directly off of Tulsa Creek Road adjacent to Panther Landing Road here. Uh, the proposed density is point six eight units per acre. Uh, the lots are forty thousand square feet. That's the minimum required, and all the lots are, uh, coming in at forty thousand square feet. They are providing open space. The, the minimum thirty percent open space would be five point seven one acres. This project proposes thirty point three percent open space, which is five point seven eight acres. They're proposing a fifty-foot right-of-way with roadside swales and sidewalks on either, on both sides of the street and cul-de-sac. Um, they will be paying a fee in lieu of recreation, um, parkland dedication at final plat. Um, just to give you an idea of the stormwater plan, the proposal is to fill the lot portion of the site one to two feet according to the stormwater narrative, uh, have lotline swales that convey to a roadside swale, as I mentioned, on both sides of the street, and then the, the, um, the stormwater will be conveyed to the front of the lot, where you can see those wetland areas, as well as some proposed ponds, um, right there adjacent to Tulsa Creek Road, and then ultimately will go into the ditch adjacent to Tulsa Creek Road. Here's a typical lot detail. They're proposing thirty-foot front setback, ten-foot side setbacks, and twenty-five-foot rear setbacks. According to the applicant, their proposed, or their, their expected lot coverage availability for each lot in the subdivision is about fifteen percent. Um, they will be on county water. They're proposing onsite septic. You may have noticed in your staff report that initially, the lots, uh, the site evaluations came back that the sites, uh, the soils were unsuitable, but we did receive, uh, information from our moral regional health services that if the modifications that were, that were required in the, the evaluations were performed, that they would be, uh, reclassified to provisionally suitable. Uh, they are proposing street trees, and there may be some reforestation of some of the open space areas to meet the minimum requirements of the ordinance. Um, you can also see that they are proposing a riparian buffer adjacent to the wetlands at the rear of the property, as well as around these pockets of wetlands at the front of the site. This is directly from your staff report. These are the adequate public facilities numbers for the schools. It does appear that Moyoc Elementary has capacity, uh, to accommodate the three students that are expected to be generated by this development. The middle schools also have capacity for the one student, and the high school as well has capacity at this time. And these, uh, these numbers are updated through the January twenty twenty-four enrollment numbers. The site is classified in Imagine Currytuck, uh, twenty forty vision plan as G-one transect, which is a low-density growth transect. That classification is intended for agricultural lands and compatible, compatible low-density rural residential growth. So in considering the request, these are some policies, and these are all found in your staff report, that you may want to consider, um, when determining whether the project is consistent with the land use plan. These first set of policies are related to the land use policies, the ordinance regarding using the map as a guide, the future land use map as a guide, considering small area plans, community character, and to protect the uniqueness of the county through preservation of farmland, wooded areas, and open space. Then there are quite a few policies related to infrastructure and county services that may apply, including ensuring the, uh, sufficient provision of services to support growth. The costs of infrastructure be borne by, uh, those creating the demand. New development connected to the county's water system, um, septic systems and suitable soils are acceptable. Improve stormwater management and mitigate, um, and stormwater mitigation throughout the county, and then, um, continue to enforce the adequate public facilities ordinance for school capacity, and ensure that public services remain at a sufficient level. Uh, there are these environmental and parks and recreation-related policies of the plan. I won't read through those. Those are, those are pretty, uh, self-explanatory. They are paying the, um, fee in lieu of recreation, which related to the parks and rec policy. And here are some more specific policies related to the northern mainland area of the county and the Moyoc subarea of, of the county. I won't, I won't read those for you either, but they're, they're in your packet for you to review. Uh, the site is also, um, within the Moyoc small area plan boundary, and that plan does designate the site as limited service. Um, residential, the emphasis in that plan is on more residential development, and, uh, residential densities in this designation, the limited service designation range between one and one and a half units per acre. As I mentioned before, this particular subdivision proposes point six eight units per acre, so it's consistent with that plan in that respect. The TRC did review the application, provided these comments, that the applications in compliance with the ordinance and any TRC comments related to the design of the subdivision need to be addressed at the construction drawing phase. And as you're aware, these are the four, uh, special use permit review standards that the board needs to consider when deciding this application. Uh, that the use, uh, the project will not endanger public health or safety, will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands, and will be in harmony in the, with the area. It will conform to the Imagine Currytuck or other county adopted plans, and not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate, uh, public school facilities. Uh, so that's all I had prepared for you tonight. Are there any questions that I can answer at this time?
Anything from the board?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Alright, this time I'll vote the applicant, their representative vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Bill Brumsey. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Wilson Ridge of Moyoc LLC. Two members of the, of the, uh, applicant are here, and that's Mr. Jerry Old and Trevor Old. So we are here for this quasi-judicial evidentiary proceeding, seeking a preliminary plat approval for Wilson Ridge. And as staff has says, thirteen-lot traditional subdivision located off Tulsa Creek Road in Moyoc. Our, uh, witnesses will be Mark, Mark Bissel, an engineer, Hunter Howell, and appraisal, and, um, we will, and the evidence will show competent material and substantial evidence that the four criteria that, uh, staff just mentioned are, uh, met in, on this particular application. So I'm going to ask Mr. Bissel to come up first. Alright, please state your name and give your business address for the board.
Uh, Mark Bissel, and my address is thirty-five twelve North Croatan Highway.
Alright, and go over for the board your, uh, education, experience, and background in civil engineering land use.
I have a degree in civil engineering from Duke University. I've been, um, licensed, uh, in North Carolina since nineteen eighty-two, and I've been practicing, uh, this type of work in this, um, in this geographic area for, uh, going on forty years now.
Okay, and have you previously been admitted as an expert before this, this board here?
Many, many times.
Many times. Uh, Mr. Chairman, this time I'll tender Mr. Bissel as an expert in civil engineering and land use.
Alright, thank you. Any objection from the board? Thank you.
Explain your role in this project for the board.
I, uh, remember, uh, the planning and the design of this project, and, um, have, uh, reviewed the, the layout, the compliance of the ordinance, the stormwater management preliminary, uh, planning, and, and, uh, have been involved in the technical review process with the county staff.
Okay, alright, and how many lots are in the subdivision?
There are thirteen lots, uh, on a nineteen-acre tract.
Alright, and, uh, what, what are the minimum size of the lots?
Minimum size lot is a forty thousand square foot lot, and we're, this is a traditional subdivision.
Traditional, not a conservation.
Correct.
Alright, and how much open space is in, in this particular subdivision?
There's a thirty point three acres, I believe is the number, which exceeds the, the minimum requirement.
Not the actual number, but percent, percentage?
Thirty, thirty percent is the.
Yeah, thirty percent, not thirty acres.
Thirty, right.
Thirty percent, yes. Okay.
Correct.
All right.
Thank you.
So the, uh, as, as, as far as the use endangering will, uh, the use of the property, the proposed use of the property will not endanger public health or safety. What, tell me about the stormwater management and, and how that complies with, uh, the U D O.
Let me, uh, scroll to the screen that shows the, um, if I can find it. The land use plan. There we are. So, uh, first of all, stormwater management will be provided in accordance with the, uh, the Currituck County Stormwater Manual and the State of North Carolina, uh, D E Q requirements. Specifically, stormwater is being conveyed from higher areas of the site, uh, to the south, uh, to existing low areas that lie on the, um, northern part of the site adjacent to Tulsa Creek Road, detained and then slowly released into an existing discharge there that goes into the, um, Tulsa Creek Road drainage system. Uh, Alamo Regional Health has evaluated each of the thirteen lots and determined that, um, that they are capable of adequately treating domestic wastewater if with, uh, properly drained and, and filled lots. The, um, project is being designed in accordance with the E Q, uh, sedimentation and erosion control requirements. The potable water supply is being provided in accordance with, uh, Public Water Supply Rules and including the water system will be modeled, uh, during the final design to ensure that adequate fire protection is provided in addition to domestic water service.
All right. So in your, uh, expert opinion, will the use endanger the public health or safety due to, due to, uh, any plans associated with the proposed use?
No, it will not.
All right. And does the plan confirm, uh, con, uh, conform to the Imagine Currytuck Land Use Plan and other officially adopted plans?
It does. Uh, Moyac Small Area Plan classified applies it as limited service with, uh, suggested density of one to one and a half units per acre. And, uh, again, we're down at the, about half of that at point six eight units per acre. Uh, the twenty twenty, uh, Imagine Currituck Plan, um, suggests, uh, a density of up to one unit per acre. And again, we're a little below that at point six eight. The Moyac Subarea Policy, um, there, there's several policies that support, uh, this type of, uh, request. The Moyac Subarea Policy talks about properly managing urban, the urban level of growth in Moyac, which is supported by this plan. Several land use policy goals from the twenty forty vision plan are supported, including land use goal one, which is encouraging development at densities appropriate for the location, including factors such as environmental soils, uh, infrastructure, uh, wastewater treatment, transportation facilities, uh, compatibility of the site, uh, and, uh, the ability to serve it with, uh, county services. Uh, land use policy one point three, considering the community character and established visions. Parks and Recreation Policy two, which calls for increasing pedestrian bicycle connectivity and we have internal walkways and we're also constructing the first section of walkway, uh, our multi-use, uh, path along Tulsa Creek Road along the subdivision. And, uh, and, um, staff has mentioned also the numerous additional policies and goals that are outlined in the staff report.
All right. And you've reviewed the staff report that was just going over and you're in agreement with, um, that the, that the proposed use complies with those, those stated policies that staff has laid out as well?
It does and, and I believe it complies with all applicable provisions of the U D O.
Okay. All right. And, and your opinion, will the use be in conformity with the land use plan and all the other officially adopted plans of the county?
It will.
Uh, on to adequate public facilities. Have you reviewed the staff report regarding adequate public facilities?
I have.
Okay. And are you in agreement with the conclusions that the staff has drawn regarding this, this subdivision as well?
Absolutely. The latest A D M figures show that Moyac Elementary School is at a ninety-five percent capacity, which means that the school has room for approximately thirty four more students and, uh, this subdivision is proposing three for the elementary school. Uh, the middle school is at only eighty percent capacity and this project is expected to generate one student for the middle school. The high school is at eighty-seven percent on the report and again, this development should generate one single student. So the numbers show that adequate school capacity is available for this project.
Okay. All right. And is it in your expert opinion that the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, including but not limited to schools, fire and, fire and rescue, law enforcement, other county facilities?
Well, well, specifically to, to schools because they, they changed the, the, the criteria, but yes.
Okay.
My testimony is really specific to schools.
All right. All right. Those are all the questions I have for Mr. Bissel.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Three.
Fire.
Okay. Just some clarity, Matt. Uh, first question is the property to the north of that. Uh, I see a house there and some land. I, I'm assuming there's a nice drainage ditch or some to, to, to capture the water from running off into that property adjacent to that?
Well, there, there's an existing drainage ditch there.
Okay, because I know we had a problem with, down by Old Jury Road with the existing ditch there. When that development came in, we had a lot of that water flooding into that property. Um, is that a ditch being addressed at all? Has it been, I mean, do we know it's going to hold the water and drain properly and where is it going? And have we, have we looked, has that, has that been looked at?
We have looked at that. In fact, we've done a topographic survey and that ditch is actually shown on, on this drawing. And as you can see that these, the way that that works right now is that ditch runs out and stops and, and turns to the right just before it gets to, this does have a, uh, can you see the pointer on?
Yes, we can, yes.
So, so this is the ditch you're talking about, which actually turns and runs this way through an existing culvert. It's actually a very small culvert, but it does run in this direction and get to, to Survey Road. What we're actually doing is connecting that directly with the existing ditch here to get it really a little more efficiently into the, uh, Tulsa Creek Road drainage system.
Okay. Um, the next question I had is the, the traffic pattern. It's right in front of that trash, uh, convenience site there. And I know we had talked about as a county of putting another, uh, regress or entrance down that road somewheres. Has the, and the amount of traffic going through there, is that going to create any issues with the traffic in front, going in and out? And with the development of Moyac, we expect that larger, um, I guess, road capacity going in and out. Has that been looked at yet or given a concern or what's your thoughts on that?
Well, you know, the scope of this development is, you know, far under the threshold for doing a traffic impact analysis. But what we did do was, was line it up directly across from, uh, the Pan, existing Panther Landing Road, which is really the safest way to, to do that intersection.
Is the turn lane there, correct?
It is, yeah, I can't tell too much from that drawing.
They wanted, if they were coming, obviously if they were coming south, they would turn right into it. They were coming north, there is a, isn't there a turn lane?
There's a, there's a deceleration lane as they come north.
There is some decel lanes in here?
Should there be a decel lane into the subdivision?
Because I can't see.
No, there's not enough, uh, traffic to warrant a decel into the subdivision.
So. There's a turn lane to the left going into the dump, correct? But there's not a decel lane going into the subdivision. Because I mean, I really can't tell on the picture.
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a widened road section on the, um, as you're coming toward Panther Landing from the south. But it's not, it doesn't look like a full deceleration lane.
Okay. And I guess my third question then is, um, I know originally Alamo Regional Health said it was not, um, as it stands right now, does not perk or will not hold a septic system or the drainage fields. So you're, you're going to be doing some fill in there? Is that what the intent is to get it up higher to meet the drainage standards?
To fill and drain, that's, that's kind of their standard answer with this type of soil.
Okay. Because I know just past rain events we've had, I've had, I've heard from a lot of people and a lot of it, septic systems too, when the water table goes up, but they're just, it's just not draining out the fields. But that'll all be designed so it doesn't back up and flow out and stuff.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Well, those are the only questions and concerns I had, but.
One far as similar to what Commissioner Payment said, the suitable soils. Would that be a better question for you or the, the applicant? As far as, I mean, I, I read the, it's on page forty, whatever, where the kind of carbonations. And then recommended far as the sand to fill the elevation, the applicants in agreeance to all that, obviously to make the lots perk.
That's correct.
Uh, Mr. Bissel, off the top of your head, do you know kind of what trip generation of a normal household would, would, just from working with this stuff over the years?
Yeah, it's, it's typically figured at just under ten trips per lot for a, a single family home like that, so.
And that's over the course of a day, right?
Yes, it is. Over the course of twenty-four hours.
Can I just ask a que, some clarification from what Commissioner Payment was asking? When you fill these lots to make them provisionably suitable, that's not going to cause runoff into adjacent properties?
No, there, the, the lots are crowned with, uh, lot line swales. If you look, uh, for example, here, the lot, there's a lot line swell that's directing on the runoff from the home to the street and then it flows from the street down into these, uh, B and Ps, which then are, and we're putting in a, um, an outlet structure that kind of, that directs that water into the, uh, Tulsa Creek Road Drainage System. So no, it's directed away from the adjacent properties.
So you're basically going to slope it in on itself to catch the water by the road and bring it down rather than. I mean, we, we've had a lot of discussion about runoff, obviously, with the past few years and not disturbing the flow that may be migrating through the property now, looking upstream, basically. So I don't, and it, it, does this property have ditch on both sides, basically, that's existing? I mean, you pointed out.
It does.
Property line, it's just kind of.
The, the, the ditch on the, on this property line is, is less well defined but, and it's actually mostly off of this property.
Okay.
So I got a guess, I quit, so that, that existing ditch then has been calculated?
And we're leaving a little buffer there and then bringing that, so we're not messing with their existing drainage there. We're just leaving that alone and taking the water in the other direction.
So then the calculation has been done for the additional runoff from these lots. The current ditches will handle that, that's been.
Well, the final modeling doesn't get done until the, until the next stage.
So you may have to modify the digits some possibly?
We may, yeah. We may have to increase the area size of these ponds or what have you.
Okay. Anything?
I'm, I'm good there.
Okay. Anything on this side? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
State your name and business address for the board.
My name is, uh, Hunter Howell and my business address is four twelve East Chab Street, Cary, North Carolina, two seven five one one.
Explain your training background and experience when it comes to land evaluations and appraisals.
Yes, so I'm a professional real estate appraiser and I work for Valbridge Property Advisors. I'm licensed by North Carolina as a state certified general appraiser. Um, I'm also a member of the Appraisal Institute, working towards an M A I designation and I've also been appraising properties throughout North Carolina for approximately ten years.
All right. And have you previously been admitted before this board as an expert witness?
I have.
All right. What, um, uh, what, what's your licensure here in North Carolina?
Uh, state certified general appraiser.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chairman, at this time I would, I would tend to Mr. Howell as an expert in land evaluations and appraisals.
Any objection from the board? All right. Thank you, sir. We'll accept.
All right. Explain what your role is in this project.
So as part of this project, uh, I was engaged to study, uh, the impacts of the project uh, to the value of adjoining property and whether, uh, the project's in harmony with the surrounding areas.
Okay. All right. And as such, did you repair, prepare a report on this project?
I did, uh, similar to other testimonies I've offered to this board. Uh, I prepared a report, uh, to analyze the effects of the proposed development on the surrounding areas.
Okay. If I may approach. Let's, let's just report and I would ask that that be admitted. I think there's enough copies for everyone to pass around there. Thank you. All right. If you will, um, walk through the report for the board and, and let them know what you discovered of this, with this use and how it will impact the surrounding properties.
Absolutely. Um, I'll kind of go through a synopsis and then I'll point out some specific pages that, that you guys should probably note. Uh, so the report looked at the surrounding land, land uses and residential values over the previous three years. And this was to determine the, the market demographics and trends for this area. I also looked at other developments in comparable locations in order to determine the effects of these developments in the area in which they are located. Uh, the report, report analyzed a one, three and five mile radius, looking at the population, housing supply and household income data over the last ten years with the projections of the next five years. This data is, is on page three of the report. The population within this five mile radius is expected to grow annually by approximately one percent over the next five years. Uh, in addition, we also analyzed the housing inventory and price per square foot over the last three years. Uh, there was a sharp decline in home, in homes available in Moyac starting in two thousand nineteen with price per square foot increasing over the same time period. Uh, this indicates that there's a need for additional inventory, uh, to keep, uh, housing affordable, uh, in the area. And in general, there is a positive impact to the surrounding properties with this, uh, type of development proposed. As, as new residential developments come to areas, enhances the surrounding area positively, positively in terms of the property values. Increasing home values increases the value of available vacant land as developers, uh, look to fill the void, uh, of additional housing in the area. Uh, this has been seen in several instances across the eastern part of the state. Uh, we looked at three large residential subdivisions with master plans in other formerly rural areas and found they tend to increase adjacent values. And this is on page nine of the report. The proposed development is surrounded by single family residential dwellings, vacant agricultural land and residential subdivisions. And it is common for single family residential developments to be located in the same general area within a particular market. Typically, these developments are clustered, uh, beside each other along less traveled corridors in order to keep harmony of use. Uh, larger commercial developments are typically located a short distance away along higher traffic corridors, limiting the number of vehicles passing the residential developed areas. Uh, based on the proposed density of the development and these tendencies, uh, the, this use will not injure the value of adjoining and abutting properties. And lastly, we also looked at similar developments, uh, in the immediate area to determine if this project is cohesive with the development pattern. Uh, this is on, uh, page five of the report. Uh, we identified five, uh, similar subdivisions in the area recently developed or approved or, and under construction. And based on, uh, these developments, we identified this project is cohesive and in harmony with the surrounding uses. Uh, therefore, based on this analysis and report, I found that the proposed use, uh, will not injure the value of adjoining and abutting lands and will be in harmony with, uh, the surrounding area. And I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Any questions?
Uh, when you, I guess, when you do the evaluation like that, especially on adjoining properties, it looks like on the north side again, is that, that's all shrubbery in the ditch line and trees? Is that correct? Well, I would just, I mean, see, do you take any like buffers and anything in between them that could, could, could affect any views or noise or anything like that?
Typically, yes. Uh, we, we do look at that, that, those type of things, but based on the site. Typically, yes, uh, we, we do look at that, that, those type of things, but based on the site plan, and it being in accordance with, with, uh, the UDO and everything along those lines, um, that there appears to be adequate buffers between each property.
Okay, so that's, that's your opinion, you see adequate buffer for noise and stuff like that?
Yes, it, yes, it's typical of most subdivisions, um, that have appraised or reviewed.
That's good, that's all I had, yeah.
Thank you. All right. Nothing for, further for him, thank you.
Thank you.
Those are all of, uh, my witnesses, I, I asked this time that the staff report and the report from Mr. Howell be admitted into the record.
Okay, thank you. Met that?
If you want, you want me to give them the summary, I don't know if we have any, any people that have signed up to speak?
Well, I can do a public hearing and, uh, open for public comment, and if there's any, give you a chance to rebut if you feel the need to. How's that sound? Um, this is a public hearing, and it is open to public comment, I do not have anyone signed up this evening for public comment. Uh, is there anyone in the audience that came in late that would like to speak to this matter? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment at this time. And, uh, did you have any final remarks or anything?
Just in summary, uh, Mr. Chairman and board, the evidence that's been presented, which has not been rebutted, is that the use will not endanger the public health or safety, the use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands, and will be in harmony with the area in which it's located. The use will be in conformity with the land use plan and other official, officially adopted plans, and the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide, uh, adequate public facilities included, but, but not limited to schools, fire, and rescue, law enforcement, and other county facilities. So in this quasi judicial, uh, decision evidentiary hearing, um, you, you as the board are bound, uh, by the evidence that's been presented, and if it, if it does meet, uh, the criteria, then, uh, the plan, uh, we, we feel that the plan uh, should be approved and ask for your approval of the preliminary plat.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Chairman, can I ask a question, the staff, just a clarification, this.
You want Jenny or?
It doesn't, anybody, is there gonna be a final drawing that's gonna have to come before us, cuz they said they may have to do ditches or something, will we see this again? If they have to change something, or?
No, I believe the, the changes that they were talking about would be, uh, dealt with at the construction drawing phase.
Okay, so.
You will not necessarily see this again.
If, if the ditches or something has to be, that's something that staff would be addressing and looking at at that level.
Right, it would be, the technical plans would be reviewed at construction.
I have a question for Jenny, at what phase will they, would, would a traffic analysis be required, if any?
Um, the ordinance requires traffic impact analysis for shopping centers, I believe, greater than thirty thousand square feet. So, that would be a matter of the discretion of the board, um, to require that in, in a hearing such as this.
So it's possible we will get no evidence about the traffic that this will generate, or the, the traffic patterns on Tulsa Creek and Panther Landing, is that right, we won't get that information?
You, well, I mean, if you ask for it, I suppose you could get it, but
that won't be part of.
That would be how you would get it, it wouldn't necessarily be part of the staff report.
But it's not a requirement, is that a question?
Correct.
Can I ask Jenny a question also? I noticed that the applicant is Wilson Ridge of Moyoc LLC, but then on page forty-one, for the proposed street name, it says the applicant is Allied Properties LLC.
Is that the agenda package page forty-one? That was for the, uh, Army Corps of Engineers?
Uh, it's master street list form, page forty-one.
Oh, I see that, yes, I see that.
That, that's not correct, that, that's, uh, the applicant, the owner of the property is, is Wilson Ridge of Moyoc LLC.
And who is Wilson Ridge?
These two, Jerry and Trevor.
And, and, um.
And Justin.
And, yeah, who, stand, just stand up, you can stand up, tell them who the members are.
Jerry old, Trevor old, Justin old.
So what is, uh, Allied Properties LLC, that, are they, are they partnering in this, or are they just a member of this particular group, or is it just a typo?
That appears to be just a typo, I, I didn't fill this, this application out, but that just appears to be an incorrect, uh, a listing on that application. Allied, they are not, um, they're not a, a member of, of Wilson Ridge of Curritah, Wilson Ridge of Moyoc LLC.
Right, and if you notice on this street list form, it actually says it was for a conservation subdivision. My, my thought is that it was, maybe there was a different plan at some point, um, and when that was submitted to Harry Lee. But I did speak with Harry Lee because the proposed street name is Wilson Road, and they're proposing Wilson Ridge Road, and he said that that was, that was okay.
And the Wilson, the Wilson family owned this property for a very long time, and, and that's the reason for the name.
And I'll ask you one more question. It talks about the field because the septic tanks can't be approved. I read somewhere that they're recommending twelve inches?
On the, uh, site evaluation?
Yeah.
It is, yes.
Twelve inches of field.
A foot, yeah.
That's why I was making sure the runoff wasn't gonna pass.
Which we, we, we typically see, when they do the BMP ponds, they use the excavated material to elevate and shake the land, deal with that, and it's my understanding that most of the subdivisions around here probably don't qualify, they have to have fill on them.
That's correct, Mr. Bissell touched on that.
Mentioned that.
You may have some more information if you would like for him to come back up, but most are, are going to require that, or a, a good percentage are gonna require, uh, that type of, of work to be done, to be suitable.
I'm thinking about across the road where we fill up something, and then the people next door to it get the runoff, so.
Now, I think, Mr. Mark, Bissell, why don't you come back up for a second? So you've done a lot of, a couple developments in Curritah County, is it, is it, is it fair to say that, that you see this a lot, that the soils are not initially maybe the best soils for, uh, traditional infiltration system?
We do see it a lot, and Moyoc, you know, that it ranges from twelve inches to twenty-four inches, with probably an average of about eighteen inches on the subdivisions that we've done to, uh, satisfy the health department on the, on the septic systems.
And so when you, when you shape these lots, um, I, I brought it up earlier, but I just wanna hit on this point again. Your intent is that, I'm guessing the rear of the lot is going to be at a higher elevation than the front of the lot to facilitate water running back towards your, your main ditches, right? And, and shed the water into the property rather than away from the property.
Right, well, the, the main runoff that we're trying to capture is from the house and the, and the driveway area and parking areas, which are
Right.
typically on the front half of the lot, the back half of the lot is typically gonna be the septic system and repair area.
Right.
But, you know, we're capturing that, all the runoff that comes off the house and the driveway and, and so forth, and carrying that to, to the street.
And you have side swales as well, right, and those will be
Exactly.
set at a depth to facilitate water.
Those swales will actually go back farther than they're showing here, cuz they'll, they'll be draining the septic areas as well.
And I guess Jenny, um, then, when, when they get all those drainers, calcul, runoff calculations done, that will be brought to you and showing that the, any modifications of the existing ditches, you'll be looking at that to make sure that that can capture the runoff calculations after all this filling, everything's done, correct?
Correct, the TRC will be reviewing it, and our consultant academies will be reviewing those.
Okay, to make sure that the ditches will, will capture and hold that runoff then, okay.
And Jenny, I have a question about the stormwater review. It says on, on page fifty-four at the bottom that the stormwater detention requirements will be further evaluated at the CD stage once post, uh, pre and post-development stormwater modeling have been completed. So their advisory comments, um, that the stormwater, the space allotted for stormwater detention may not be sufficient, and that the pond, uh, placed directly east of Wilson Ridge is too narrow to provide the, uh, amount of appreciable depth for a wet pond. So, is that saying that this design is flawed and needs to be redone? Or is that saying that, that will be redone in the next phase?
It's, it's an advisory comment just to say that, that the pond may not capture the amount of water needed.
And is that the plan we're looking at right now?
Well, this is.
Yes.
But this isn't the full plan, this is a preliminary.
Preliminary.
Right.
But what they reviewed, my question is, is what they reviewed, what that comment is about?
Correct, yes.
And Mr. Bissell, if you comment on, on just.
The academy doesn't know if it's adequate or not until we do the modeling, just like we don't know if it's adequate or not until we do the modeling. If it has to be enlarged, it'll be enlarged.
And the construction drawing phase.
During the construction drawing phase, right.
That will be captured in the construction drawing phase.
Exactly.
Mr. Bissell, in far as the, the permit, far as like, if far as the how more regional health services wouldn't issue anything unless it meets with the proper fill and all that, so they wouldn't get a septic permit.
Exactly. And they'll, they'll evaluate each lot again as they're, as they're filled and people apply for building permits.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I don't think there's ever been a development north of Sligo that has not re, had this type of normicature on it.
That's correct, it's very co, very common.
But then I think about Jury Road and what happened.
That's, that's not even, that, they filled in ditches on Jury Road, they had a block culvert pipe on Jury Road.
That one ditch on Jury Road had been cleaned for over.
There was, and that, now they've gone and cut, cut pipes through the, 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 that thing is a mess, thanks to those people.
But it's draining now, yeah.
They filled in stuff too on.
Yep, they filled in ditches.
They filled in ditches.
And they put culvert pipes through the, the berm, back into waterloo.
Someone just did that recently, right back at us.
It was draining back in his yard the other day.
It was.
Okay, we're off topic on that.
Yep, yep, okay.
So, um, anyway, any, anything further for Jenny or Mark? Okay, thank you very much, everyone. All right, well, they presented their case, um, we've closed public comment, so it's time for action one way or the other from the board.
Mr. Chairman, based on the evidence that's been presented tonight and not refuted, I'm will move to approve PB twenty-three dash twenty-six, Wilson Ridge preliminary plat special use permit because the applicant has discriminated, has demonstrated the proposed use meets the review standards of the UDO, and I will include all the findings that was listed under the staff reports.
Okay, we still need to, do the, the use, we're not, uh, endanger public health or safety.
Yeah, and include those four, um, review standards.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Thank you. Um, any further comment for the board? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
All right. Thank you, carries. All right, uh, next up this, this evening is PB twenty-three dash twenty-seven, HOM Development LLC, request for an amended, amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter Four, Section four point two point five A, Extractive Industry, to allow existing mines to expand up to fifty percent of the total site area, provided the existing mine has been in operation for twelve months and has been in good standing for the past twelve months.
Mr. Chairman, I'll ask battery keys from this.
Okay. Um, you know, Michelle, what, you have what now, Owen?
My son works for a sand pit that could be affected by this text amendment.
Does that rise to that level, this?
In the past, hasn't it been, is his employment in jeopardy based upon the approval or disapproval of this?
So, your son works for the applicant?
No, I'm not saying the applicant, but works for a sand mine that this would apply to.
Okay, and so would you have a direct financial advantage depending on how this turns out? Would you have any?
No.
Do you have a fixed opinion about the outcome of this matter that's not subject to change? So it's really up to the board, if, if the board, if a member wants to make a motion for him to be excused from voting, um, otherwise, I mean, it doesn't appear that there's an issue?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with it either.
Can, uh, can you turn, I, I mean, I might purchase twenty loads of sand a year from different sand, sand pits, I mean, from Pittman, from his son, I mean, is that?
It doesn't, you don't favor one over the other that creates any kind of associational?
This isn't, that is the next thing, I just, I just wanted to disclose.
I know, it's up to the board if they wanna, if they wanna move to.
No, you're not, you're not, you're not gonna profit from this.
You're not kidding, we're all in this together.
Right. Yeah, all right, very good, all right, well, this is a public hearing as well, so I need, uh, everyone that's gonna be involved in this to come forward, to be sworn in.
It's a legislative.
It's legislative?
Mm-hmm.
No, never mind, it's under public hearing. I guess it is a legislative decision. I read that earlier today, I did read my packet. All right, Donna, how are you this evening?
I'm doing well, hope you are.
Might get a little punchy, so, uh, all right.
Good evening. So this is a text amendment application submitted by HOM, or HOM Development LLC, and it is designed to, um, amend Chapter Four, which is, which are the use standards, specifically Section four point two point five A, which involves extractive industry or mining operations. Uh, this would in fact allow an existing mine to request an expansion of up to fifty percent of the total site area after waiting twelve months from initial operations beginning. So, if the mine had been in operation for tw- twelve months or a year, they could come before the board and ask for an expansion of that mining operation up to fifty percent of the total site. Also, they would have to make sure that they have maintained compliance with all local, state, and federal regulations, uh, governing the mining operation for the past twelve months. And when we look at the total site area, the language in the ordinance, uh, includes all area with the exception of Kama wetlands and US Army Corps of Engineers jurisdictional wetlands. So the initial application that would come before you for the actual establishment of the mine operation would allow up to thirty percent of the total site area to be mined. And if this particular, uh, request were approved, they'd have to wait twelve months to come back before you again, request the expansion. And when we look at the specific language in the ordinance, which is a snapshot from the actual staff report, these are the additional standards that apply to the expansion itself. And if they come before you, again, we're, they're looking at changing the regulations or, um, changing that time period in which they have to wait from five years to twelve months. The current language requires them to wait five years. Mine would have to be in operation for five years before they come back before you, um, to ask for that expansion. This would reduce that to twelve months, as well as maintaining the compliance portion of it, that is also reduced from five years to twelve months.
So, okay, so, we've got a mine, it's starting to excavate, and, um, I mean, the purpose of this is to allow the expansion of a mine. It, have we ever had a mine that had excavated to limits in?
We have some that have been permitted up to fifty percent.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I understand that, but the purpose of this is to accelerate the length of move forward when they can expand greater, and I'm curious if we've ever had a mine that had reached its limits prior to five years.
Not usually, it's, it's only when you would see like maybe a small mine operation, small mine size, that would be able to excavate that quicker. Uh, most of the mines that we have in the county are much larger and extend over a greater period of time, uh, before they come back. uh, before they come back for the the expansion. And some don't even ask for an expansion.
So, right, so I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what's, what is the logic behind reducing it from five years to twelve months?
Uh, well, the applicant has requested this, and that's probably more, design more, question would probably be more appropriate for him. But but, I mean, it it basically just would allow them to come back before the board, possibly even before they've reached the thirty percent.
So right now, the requirement is that they can come back at any time for thirty percent, right? There's no time, they can do thirty percent.
Under their initial special use permit, correct.
And this would allow them to come back even before the thirty percent?
Potentially.
So, small mine, and, you know, definitely not in Mr. Jarvis's neighborhood. But, you know, one that I I, I guess will, and I guess this is for the applicant, so I'll I'll hold off.
Okay.
Thanks.
And as I mentioned, um, you may have recalled, it's been about a year ago, uh, we brought some language back to the board uh, to modify some of the mining operation, uh, language, uh, one of which was to expand on that notification area, expanding, you know, when we send out public notices and when the applicant sends out community meeting notices, that increased to fifteen hundred feet. Part of that text amendment also removed that administrative component where we where we as staff could allow up to a forty percent of the total site to be mined, so basically an additional ten percent. But the fifty percent stayed in the ordinance. And one thing to keep in mind is these expansions, when they come, they're they're going to come back before you through the evidentiary hearing process. So you're going to have the first one at thirty percent, wait twelve months, and then they're going to come back to you again for another evidentiary hearing based on their expansion that they are proposing. Any questions on that?
Anything further for Donna?
No.
This could be a way to slow down new mines being developed.
Yeah, there's not just more capacity. Okay, thank you.
So when we look at the Imagine Curry Tuck 2040 Vision Plan, this proposed text amendment really doesn't create any inconsistencies with any of the goals or policies in that document. It also doesn't really strengthen or reduce any of the specific standards for mining activities. But all the remaining requirements for a mining, uh, permit, special use permit criteria would remain unchanged. So it's just a a change in the timeframe or the waiting period for coming before you again for, uh, the expansion. Uh, the Imagine Curry Tuck Vision Plan includes a, an implementation matrix, which are typically used when we are looking at text amendment applications, such as one like this. And there's only one, um, action statement relevant to mining operations, and that's Land Use C C Act 12, where you look at evaluate, evaluating and strengthening the standards for mining activities. So the staff recommendation on this application is for approval because primarily the quasi judicial mechanism that's in place for special use permit applications will remain in place for the expansion, where all of the adjacent land uses, the expanded area, and any of the changed or existing conditions would be evaluated during that application as well. Uh, the planning board recommended approval on December 12th, 2023 at a five to one vote. And that's all I have prepared for you tonight, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
I have one. So if a mine wants to expand up to fifty percent, do they have to get state permits and approval before we give ours?
Yes.
And and what typically, what's the timeframe? How long does something like that take?
How long does it take to obtain a state permit?
Yes.
Modification? I, we'd have to ask the applicant that question. They're more familiar with the state.
Okay.
Permitting process.
What would be the pitfall of just making it fifty percent at approval?
That is also another option that the board could consider going, you know, i- if if you want to maintain that component in the ordinance that, um, making sure they are compliant with their permit during that twelve month period. Or do you just want to allow it on the front end, which you you have the option of doing either or?
Cause I.
And I think that was actually discussed.
I I mean, certainly when the applicant comes up, but, I mean, I guess my concerns would be what what goes wrong with a mine that requires or that would require or that we would deny. You know, I mean, I know we've had mines that over excavated that turned into a huge.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, that would have, that would have not happened.
Right, we had a backfill to expand.
We have had one operation that, um, had some compliance issues uh, for an extended period of time and had to wait, um, for their expansion.
And, who's the mine Shaw, right? The the agency, the federal agent, that agency that oversees mining, which a sand pit falls under, M Shaw, right? They're they're, they make us look like child's play when it comes to, you know.
Right, their requirements.
So, is it, you said you've only had one mine that's really been problematic. So it's it's fair to say that we don't have a real problem with mines not being in compliance as a general rule?
We have not seen with our current active mines, um, a problem with compliance, with the exception of the one.
Okay.
Most of the one, at least most of the ones that have submitted applications for, um, an expansion have all showed compliance.
And and we could also withdraw or suspend their use. I mean, if they were in violation, if they were doing, you you know, things they weren't supposed to be doing.
There are actions you could take on the special use permit.
Right.
Okay, anything further, Donna? All right, Donna, I'll, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
And invite the applicant up if they'd like to come up and talk to us for a minute and, um, explain why they're asking for this change.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm good. Long evening. My name is Donna Creef, and I'm the principal at Creef Consulting LLC. And I've been working with Mr. Hatchell, who was the H in the H M, H O M LLC. And they, um, hired me because I have a background in land use and local government planning about writing this text amendment. And so when they got their special use permit, there was the requirement, or it was changed after they got their special use permit. And granted, this is a text amendment, and it's not specific to them, but it does, they are the applicant. That five-year requirement was an administrative approval. And so they've been working at their, uh, site that they lease, and they have been planning out their, their, you know, toward five years, and they realized that they would be at their thirty-five percent that is the capacity that's allowed under their special use permit before they reach the five-year period that's in the ordinance. And so in our discussions, uh, we felt that, you know, that it seemed logical, in our opinion, that a twelve-month or a lesser period than five years would allow them to ask for the expansion, continue to the fifty percent that the Curry Tuck ordinance allows, with the logic being, okay, we have an intensive land use in the community and that if they could go get their expansion permit earlier and go through the process for that to demonstrate that they're in compliance with everything else, go from thirty-five to fifty, and then they could get to that fifty percent, they could finish their mining operations, the property could be reclaimed, and then it could transition to another use that wasn't as an intensive use on the community. They leased the property, and so once they're done with their fifty percent, then they do the reclamation that the state mining permit is required them to do, they'll be, they'll be out of there. And then the property will be the property owner's decision to do with whatever they're going to do with it, the zoning ordinance allows at that time. So that's the logic behind what our thinking was. A longer time period for an intensive land use there that could possibly be decreased in time timeframe. And, um, I don't know if Mr. Hatchell has anything.
Did you say that if hypothetically, if it was, if it was redone to twenty-four months, that would still help you?
Something less than five years, yes, sir.
Okay, so Tommy, so for, you're saying, you said you were almost at your thirty percent.
They're they're close to it. Things have slowed down. I'm not exactly sure where.
Now, did you say how many years has it been?
On this particular mine?
Yeah, that's the mine that you're talking about?
A year and a half.
Okay, so in another six months, you're going to be at your thirty percent.
And we were factoring in the time period to get through the review process because once the legislative decision is made, they still have to come back for the quasi judicial section.
So. That goes, answer your question, and how much can you do in a twelve-month period almost?
Well, it depends on the dirt they.
Well, it depends on the size and how much to move when you want. Yeah, but that, I I guess what I'm driving to is if ultimately they're going to get the fifty percent, what?
What is the timeframe?
Why does it matter how long it takes? Uh, in other words, he's got to jump through hoops to get to the fifty percent, you know, whatever it is. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't just go to the fifty percent out the gate, if as staff said, this is rarely an issue.
No, that, it's having to come back before us two or three times for a special use permit, incur the cost of doing that.
And the states can still get involved at that point. Absolutely. Well, the state gets involved.
They govern the pitch the whole time.
Yeah, so.
The state's the bigger watchdog than we are. We're just giving permission to do it.
So I guess my thought is, the heck with, let's just go straight to fifty percent on the outset on the use permit. And no waiting period, just, you know, if you have a permit to mine, it's up to fifty percent of the total track. Cause if they violate the requi, if they contaminate the water, if they drive wells, if they drive wells dry, we're the least of their problems. And anyway, I'm just, you know.
State takes care of that.
Yes, there there's monitoring and all that's involved, yes, sir.
I think Mr. Hatchell will agree that the state inspectors walk in at any time. They don't not come in announced.
We have to do a monthly report to the state anyway for our sedimentation, our erosion control. They come out, they monitor, they check it. We have to send out water samples. We have to have our wells tested every month for height and elevations, if we're dropping the water around the area. So we have, uh, Ken Elick that works with us, has been, we've been mining over here now for over fifteen years. This is our third mine with you. So we've gotten used to it, but like you say, but Ken Elick does all of our pay, keeps up with the state, and keeps us where we stay within our area. And I think she'll tell you that we keep our mines up to date, we keep them clean, we keep them neat, and we don't.
But but again, on a s- on a countywide, because that's the text amendment blessing.
Well, statewide, you can mine a whole piece of property according to your setbacks. Ride away is three hundred feet. Easements is two hundred and fifty feet. Property lines is a hundred feet, and you can mine the whole piece of property. Your re- your legislation says that it's fifty percent, and that's fine, it's yours, but I'm just saying, but yeah, it what, it don't really make no difference to me, but it'd be easy to do it all at one time, be done with it.
You get it?
Yeah, I do. But I, I guess the question is, uh, if if we go with Paul's suggestion, what does that require of us?
We would have to do another public hearing because it's a substantial change to what's in front of you tonight.
Yeah. Would, uh.
So the the text amendment is brought.
So that's a question, I guess, a separate question, then maybe a separate little work session or something.
Why don't we just, why don't we approve this?
Just deal with what's in front of us tonight.
Then we can always make a change later.
Right.
At a staff, I mean, we could make the change later.
I I agree.
Yes, that would be, just move forward this, and then.
Okay, uh, anything further for applicant, questions, comments? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further for Ms. Donna? Questions, comments, staff? Okay, well, then I guess I'll open the floor for a motion on this.
Public hearing.
Oh, is, see, I said it was a public hearing. All right, sorry.
Just going to jump across.
I am, uh, I'm I'm, I drink too much rum. All right, this is a public hearing, so we do need to, uh, open, open public comment. There's no one signed up for public comment this evening. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this, that's in the audience? All right, seeing now, I will close the public comment on this, and now entertain a motion for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve PB 23 27 H O M Development.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, next up, board appointments. We have the Historic Preservation Commission reappointments. And, um, someone like to make a motion on this to, uh, just do a slate of these.
I move.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next we have our rec advisory, and we have four people on that.
Do we do a slate on that?
For adoption.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up is our senior citizen advisory.
I will just tell the board that my current has expired, and I did speak with Ms. Galloway. She's very excited. She lives in my district, um, and, uh, she was happy to hear, uh, talk to me about this. This is very willing, so I would make that motion to, if I could, to.
Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Got Selena, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Then we'll have to find a few more seats to fill that, round that out. Uh, next up, consent agenda. Was there any comments on anything that was within the consent agenda this evening? All right, can I have a motion for approval, please?
Move to approve.
Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
No, that one was quicker on the draw. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, at this time, I'll recess the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners.
Before you do that, Mr. Chairman, sorry, um, I need to go back to the, um, text amendment that we just went over. The motion does require a statement of consistency with all county adopted plans. Um, so we can have a review of that motion since we're still in the same meeting that it was advertised.
Okay.
Um, but the minutes must reflect that there was that consistency statement.
Thank you. All right, so, uh, Paul, would you like to renew your motion, please?
I move to approve PB 23 27 because the request is consistent with the goals, policies, and action statement of the Imagine Curry Tuck 2040 Vision Plan, Land Use C C A C T 12.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Megan. All right, uh, next up, then I'm going to recess our regular meeting and move into a special meeting in Tourism Development Authority for some budget amendments, page ninety-seven. Now, that was the, uh, lifeguards, right? It was the only thing on there. Promotion. All right, well, uh, I will move to approve the two TDA, uh, budget amendments then. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and, uh, bring us back into the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, and at this time, I'm going to move to move us into closed session pursuant to GS 143 dash three one eight dot one one A five to establish or instruct county staff concerning the position, the position to be taken by on behalf of the county negotiating material terms of a contract for the acquisition of real property by purpose or exchange to be used for any public purpose. Consideration will be given to two tracts, pin number zero zero five one zero 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 six three zero 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 zero, consisting of sixteen acres on Maple Road, Maple, and owned by J A Simmons heirs, and pin number.
Thank you.
Zero zero five nine zero 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 three nine zero 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 zero, consisting of point five acres, and is located at one three three Maple Road, Maple, North Carolina, owned by G B Banks. And GS 143 dash three one eight dot one one six to discuss personnel issues.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Do we need a, yeah, we'll take.